Technology lazy because we got Jake over there.
All right, on the construction program, still no news on when paint will be available for the strippers. Old Mountain Road still, they want to start in May. We have our Roosevelt drainage project in advance of our paving project up the grade. So James Dean's gonna do that work for us. Courtney Road, we got half of a signed document from the property owner, the last property owner, so we're waiting for the other piece to make sure that we he lost a piece of the document, so.
Okay, well, that's.
Get it re-signed again. So.
Moving forward.
Moving forward at least. We as have one for our easement, then there's the, there's a easement for his neighbor to cross his property with their driveway that's been there, but it has to be formalized now that we're doing what we're doing. So he lost that one with his neighbor, so we have to get it both of them to re-sign again. We've got one person to sign, the guy that needed the access easement. And now we have to go back to the same person who was our last signer to have them re-signed it, so. Then we can actually move forward with our.
Are we leaving these to him to sign or we?
Is that an easement that's been in place? The road's already been there? Or is this a new road because we're moving things?
It was, it's an existing one, but there never really was an easement for it, so.
So why do we're changing?
So to me, that means we're good to go then, right?
Well, we're changing.
Yeah, we're changing a portion of it to build the project, so.
Okay.
It needs to be.
So now we have to.
Yeah, where it ties into the road. So we're closer, I guess, than we were, but not quite there yet.
But he signed the big one.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is good. Still waiting on Wash Dot for a deviation for grade. And you know, that's about it, just waiting on these last few pieces.
Um, are you, I know we've got the, the striping issue. I heard last night that we're having a hard time getting PVC pipe, all sorts of pipe. Are you worried about the, the overflow pipes for James Dean to do that job? If you check to see if there's anything available?
We talked to him and they, they can, they can get a different variety which we're okay with, but they are able. That's, that's what Jeff said the other day, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's getting bad out there.
It is, very bad.
Yep.
Yeah, they couldn't get the typical culvert that we use. You can't find that, but it's, it's basically the same thing, it's just we don't typically use that brand.
It's, so it's the same?
Yeah. Yeah. It's a supplier, I think, from the East Coast. We typically would get it over here, but.
Okay.
They happen to have some, so.
Yeah, I think it'll, we'll struggle until it gets better, you know, if they put out an infrastructure package, we're all in trouble. I mean, because they're just, there aren't enough all those materials.
To build all the stuff that we're gonna use, it's not gonna work.
No.
I mean, the money will just take longer to get there, it's, you know, everybody's operating. So that being said though, like, I remember when we saw the first timing on this, it was like, we have to make a decision in two weeks and now it's been two months and they said, we won't get the stuff in time. Are we looking like? If, if we don't make decisions in the next week, that we're not gonna have the.
End of the month, we have to make decisions, that's why.
Okay.
Um, when we get there, I, we have to decide, so we'll be going around to the, get all the office furniture done. And then we'll be, you know, our public spaces, the entryway, the conference rooms, the break room, you know, that will lag a little bit. But I, we wanna clean up, we get all the office decisions made before the end of the month, so they can place the order. Said if we don't get it in by the end of the month, then you're, it's kinda iffy whether you'll get it. And you know, with delays now, um, still gonna be close. Okay, back to the road stuff, still waiting on Wash Dot for STP papers, Darland and Roosevelt. So they're reviewing our packages and we still typically there about six weeks, so we're maybe halfway into it. Grant funded safety projects, those are on ad, we'll see what happens when they open bids and and there, see what kind of challenges they have trying to procure materials as well. Maintenance side, Westside crews are crack sealing, they should be done this week. They're also taking down some hazardous dead trees in Trout Lake Park and then they'll sweep it and get ready because we'll be opening that the first of next month. And we are turning the water on, that's our plan, so we'll have the restrooms open. Typically, we don't open those until the holiday weekend, Memorial Day. But this year we have the host and they're gonna come the first part of the month, so reason not to open everything up. And then the crack seeder will move to the east side, because east side's sweeping and getting ready to crack seal next week. They're also started on the west lot, expanding that, dropping the tree and gonna start bringing in rock to build that one portion of the parking lot or expand it. And then we open bids tomorrow on our hazardous material abatement from the gray house, and so we'll get those people in as soon as we can. Once they remove that, then our crews will demo the building and rebuild what's there for parking, so. And then that'll be in a temporary state until we get some breathing room and get some more of our parking back, which will probably be next year when we build all of those other.
Although I won the lottery today, I thought, well, I might as well drive through just in case. Somebody had obviously just. I did, I got a spot.
It was two when I pulled in, I pulled in and I'm looking at the two Mountain Oaks transport buses that have been in the same spot forever. And the sheriff nine one one.
Yeah, I parked next to the sheriff.
Yeah.
Yeah. I gotta give Sharon a call, we'll see if we can get those somewhere else, either over by our building or somewhere else like the fairgrounds. Let's see, so our building contractor, the brick masons finished this week. They got the window guys back who are installing the rest of the windows, so they can actually finish the metal underneath the windows and around the windows. And let's see, roofing, they're putting the cap, the flashing on to cap, once the brick goes up to the roof and they can put that cap on the, the parapet walls and that'll finish off the roof. Electrical there, I think, working hard to keep up and finish up. There, they have some pickup work on some of the other floors, things we've changed, and I think they're trying to get through the third floor so that the sheet rockers and insulators can start up there, and then they'll drop back and get some of those pieces that we've changed, where we added conduit and it changed the, your guys' chamber, so.
Questions pertaining to what we heard at the fairgrounds about water sources and request we received about a bottled water filling station? I guess, I don't know the layout of that building and it probably would have been great to know this a year ago, before, well, three months ago before the drywall got on the wall. But is there any interest from my seatmates or ability before it's too late to put a bottled water refill station on each floor in the main hallway, not in the bathroom?
We, we have those.
They're already over there.
They're right outside the elevator, there's that compartment outside the elevator, there's a drinking fountain, bottled water on each floor.
So you already hit the nail on the head there.
Good. Okay.
Yeah, there was interest.
Yeah, we probably will look into what we can do here too.
Well, and I gotta love to taste the water over there to see if it's. I mean, I tasted it at, at Hot Rods and Geese, which you'd think would be coming out of the same pipe as that one, and I don't taste what I taste here.
Yeah.
So.
Well, it won't be the pipes in the building.
No.
So, yeah. Okay. But we'll look at what's going on here and see what we can do. Let's see. Furniture, I guess we'll talk about that. So there are a couple challenging spaces, offices, and Dan's yours, since you picked the one now.
Left or right, I got.
Yeah, you got the one that's, it's, it's a little bigger and it actually is, I think it doesn't work as well with the other layouts that they had, so they actually put together, asked them to put together some layouts for that space, because you have that bump out and then you have the column. So the, the first set of these commissioners office twenty one oh six, there's like three different options.
Well, that must have been the last one you used. Is that in today's?
Yeah, it's in today's, should be the top one. So that's your space and there's a couple of layouts to kind of work around that column and that bump out, so. Might take a look at those and, and it'll give you a few more options that are specific for that space, because it's, it's challenging. And then the next room, Lee's space was it's just big and so they, they put some, a couple furniture layouts in there for you. I think there's room for other furniture, they weren't quite sure what you, you know, needed. And so we can maybe talk about that, because there's room for, you know, another table or file cabinets, I'm not sure what you need, but.
We've got two file cabinets that should be able to go in there.
Yeah.
I did some measuring too and estimating and.
Okay, and they weren't sure whether you wanted to, to face the front where Iby's gonna sit or the rear toward the commissioners, so. There's a couple layouts that kind of.
Nice, thank you.
Do both, so that's the second package. And then I handed out four layouts and there's multiple variations on the four, I think, last week. And those will work in, in your guys' office, if any of those are acceptable. If you don't have them, I can, and I apologize for not sending this electronically today, I'll, I'll have it sent when we get back. Yeah, so hopefully I'll have time to follow up with you. I don't know if you're, you're in on Thursday at all and have time.
We're actually not this week for a change.
So last, last one is the private office, that's the one you're talking about?
Yeah, there should be, I think, four.
It doesn't say commissioner's office though, like this one.
It doesn't, yeah, yeah. So those, I think, they just, I asked them to do that because that was, none of the other furniture layouts really fit with the configuration at Dan's office. And then the furniture in, in your guy's space is an upgrade, it's a different quality of furniture. And then you also have the, the veneer selection, and I think when I came over, most of you guys were gone. Jake had made his two picks, they're the last page, should be in the packet. Planked oak or planked walnut are the two that he picked, but there's all these choices. So I wanted to give you guys a chance to, to weigh in on it as well.
I would say definitely not the plank maple, that's the two I.
And no one seems to want the light wood. And then we'll get, they were supposed to send us real copies or examples of this veneer. So I'll have those, I apologize, they just didn't make it to us yet.
We don't have to make a decision on this now, you're gonna have.
Yeah, next week we'll.
We'll be getting down to the, we're gonna have to decide next week.
Yes, yeah. So I don't know if any of the other layouts, office layouts appealed to you, or you had some other ideas or modifications to those? Or if you've even had a chance to look at that.
I looked at them last week, I, I mean, there's a couple are fine, I don't believe. I'll, I'll, I won't be in trouble picking. One of those choice, don't, I don't need forty seven choices. Four is fine, because it's like, hate it, hate it, could live with it, it's, I'm okay.
All right.
So, no, don't give me more than four.
Any thoughts on the veneer, at least from this?
Yeah, I would lean towards the oak or the walnut as well. The maple's too light for me, anyway. It would be interesting to see the real product, because it's.
That's what I said too.
Yeah, because it's, a picture's one thing, but then you get it and it's.
Yeah.
It looks, it's completely.
I didn't really look over to you, but I.
Yeah, I'd like to.
Hold my opinion until I see a product.
Okay, all right. And then the last packet for furniture is the, I guess, the conference room furniture, so we need stack, some kind of stackable chairs and tables that we can fold up and put away. So when we have the different configurations, so the, if you flip to the second page, the nesting tables are what I think we're looking at. They're easy to move around and put in place and to put away. They kind of fold up and nest together in a clump and then you can use those for a classroom type setting or, you know, some kind of a I don't know, other, other setup arrangement for meetings or, you know, events. And then these, these wired chairs, basically they're on the front page, those seem to be a lot of venues use those kind of chairs, they're really easy to stack up and put away, and they're actually fairly comfortable for a chair.
The one on the left or the one on the right?
They're actually, well, yeah, the ones on the right or the left, sorry, those are the ones I'm familiar with. The other ones, the orange ones, I have not sat in those, but.
I, I will say in middle school, they were not comfortable.
They were so little orange, you'd scratch them from the list.
Yeah.
No, I guess the one thing, the ones on the left, they come into the center, like into your back to try to get you to have good posture.
Yeah, they're, they're contoured pretty well to fit your body, the, both the seat in the back. They seem to fit pretty well and they're, they're, they're a bigger chair, they don't have arms on them. I mean, you can get them with a padded seat or not.
I'm fine with the ones on the left.
Yeah.
Fine with the ones on the left, in them. I like the basic brown, it's funny. I'm kind of a brown guy.
Scares me being a big guy.
Yeah, that, yeah.
A big guy sits in a chair with lumbar support and it just feels.
Pushes in the wrong.
Yeah, it gets you in the kidneys.
Yeah.
So that, that worries me, but.
I'll see if I can find one, somebody around probably.
Must have one that we could, yeah, you can sit in.
Yeah, they won't have seated or padded seats unless we purchase them that way, so, and maybe that's okay.
I.
Okay. And then the, let's see, let's move back through here, so there's other furniture that they, they threw out there for the lobby, chairs, a few chairs in the lobby. I think the only one that myself and Candy and Angie actually liked was option C on this page.
Oh, that's, well, that's my choice.
And did you sit in these down there?
I did not sit in, they had really modern furniture at that place, which this stuff looks pretty tame compared to the stuff they had.
Okay, well, if I see option B anywhere in that building, I'm probably gonna start like that part.
We're not doing option B. And then the last page.
C's okay.
Yeah.
I would say C's the other one on that page, that looks like it's out of the seventies show.
Some of this is from the nineteen fifties, it looks like.
Yeah.
And this was a tough one, I think, and I don't know unless they can get us a chair, a couple examples, but they, they had put these out there for chairs in your guys' space on the last page, hundred, second to the last page, sorry.
Why can't we just take these three over?
Well, I mean, for your office chairs, so. Yeah. Unless your office chairs are new too.
All right.
Think about it, let me know.
Okay.
What I'm in right now is very comfortable, I just.
Yeah, I know, we don't have to buy new stuff, if things work, we'll use them.
So when you go around asking people, are you gonna say, is there anything you wanna take with you? And then you can just.
Yes.
Subtract that off.
That would be the first thing, because everybody's gonna want a new desk, they're gonna want new bookcases, they're gonna want new tables, new chairs, new. They're gonna want to leave nothing, take nothing.
Uh, there's a lot of people that actually do, it's, it's amazing that they, they've been, they're attached to their stuff.
Say, if you give them these choices, they might take their old stuff.
The last page is, uh, chairs in your, in your office, guest chair in most of the other offices, and I don't. Yeah, I think the only one.
Chairs in most of the other offices, meaning, are these like, mine has a, a couple of guest chairs. This is what you're talking about that would fit in like our offices and everybody else's offices is a guest chair, is that correct?
Yeah, I don't know, that, I was thinking of, so something that's pretty simple, like option D or something like that for the guest chairs in most offices. You guys may want something different. That's goes with the rest of the furniture in your space.
That's true.
Yeah, so, you know, an option A might be better. Or some other selection, or something not even on this page.
Again, don't do two.
Okay, here it is.
See, here's six. So, like, okay, I hate these all except I could live with them.
You're mainly.
So like the chairs.
Perfect, so there's only one. Yeah, or.
Yeah, yeah, or somebody comes into my office or somebody in my office that has a, a room for a chair in their office.
Yeah, out of those, I'd go with D too, if you get, get that one.
Yeah, I could do D or E, actually, so I had two, two ones that I.
Good. He is acceptable, it's just.
Either's fine.
It's just wooden, as a heavy guy, I know what happens over time when you sit in a chair.
True, but these are guests. Well, from time to time.
So D for the most part is?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
How about you guys, is that D too?
Yeah, D's fine.
I was thinking about two of option Cs in mine, I wanna go more simplistic, C from, not that page, but the other page. From the main lobby third floor.
In your office for your guest chairs? Kind of upscale. It's the leather furniture.
Everything else and.
Okay.
All right.
So wait a minute. I, I have to make sure I'm on the same page as you, you're talking basic guest chairs in your office and he's talking this lobby chair in his office, am I correct?
Seems like, yeah.
You'll have to let me pick on that one.
Okay, yeah, I mean, o- option A is, is similar, and I'm sure you can get the legs in the same color too, so, but it's probably a smaller chair, I don't, I don't know how big these are, but I'm assuming that the the guest chairs in the private offices are a little smaller than that other chair. The bigger chair, but if you, there are certain layouts that this would work in too, the bigger chair, so.
That's what I was looking at from those other layouts.
Yep. All right, well, think about it for sure, let me know, and then we'll come back with a spreadsheet and mark it up next week. Okay. Kind of move along, so this X or entrance, the east entrance will close to the public next week, starting next week, and Lee Contractors, we met with them yesterday. And that's where they're gonna start, there'll be a lay down area in the front, so we'll lose some parking for them to do their work, and it'll be fenced off, that area will be fenced off. And, and then that, losing the spaces out here will just expand as time goes on. We'll keep the ADA out here as long as we can, and then it'll move back to the back, so it'll bring people in through the basement. Starting, I think, end of June is when her, when our contractor's gonna move in from the building to do the front lot. And that's when Lee moves over to do the ramp. So pretty much all summer, this out front won't be available. So. But we'll have alternates, so just that's gonna start, we have letters that'll go out this week to our neighbors. Try to work with them, because there'll be demo work, so there's gonna be noisy work, and so that we're gonna try and do before or after hours or on Saturdays. And then a lot of things will happen though, normal things during the.
During the regular.
Regular business hours, and then we'll work with the courts as well, so it's a lot of coordination to make this work. Let's see. So next week, I, Public Works was subpoenaed for a bench trial in West District Court, so I'll be attending that event next Tuesday morning, and Jeff will be here, I won't, one of us has to go, so. Just.
We lost the bet.
Yeah, so somebody, somebody damaged our guard rail, and so I have to go. Because we are always looking for people's, you know, people's insurance.
Right to pay, it's very expensive.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And then there is an opening on the RTC board for Clickatack County, for someone to be on it. In the, in the past, we haven't been able to do that because there you have to tend physically in person or had to ever since I've been here until now. Now it's available through Zoom, and so they wanna throw it out there, their four o'clock on Tuesday, the first Tuesday of the month. And so there needs to be a representative from, an elected representative from Clickatack County and, and that can be from any of the jurisdictions. And anyway, so that's open and I wanted to make you all aware of it.
They do, they do distribute grant funding. Trying to get the, they have all the same.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll discuss it.
Okay. Sorry, a lot of stuff on furniture today, but we have to get there this month.
We do. Any questions or comments?
Nope, so, yeah, you just need our answer for office chairs by next week.
Yeah. Furniture layout, I'll bring veneers next week and we can select that as well. So, and then when you look at the furniture options, if you kind of look at them, there's lateral files, bookshelves, set of drawers, there's different options, so keep that in mind. So when we come back to make a list, we'll ask you those questions, or if you want another bookshelf.
And I'm assuming it's not, we're not deciding for everything, like we can customize to each one of our offices?
Yes, you don't have to have the same thing.
Right, okay, because I thought, yeah, that's, you know, the more people you add, the more, it's harder to get.
Yes.
Consensus.
The consensus.
That's just two options.
Yes.
What you got, or what?
Or some new.
I'm used to, it's this or nothing. No problem, but I guess I'll go with that.
All right, did you want to talk about that?
Uh, yeah, we're, I handed out a quick agenda so everybody knows what's going on. Or the standards update, what we're gonna do is start off, typically with these, you don't wanna start up with the most contentious subjects.
Baby steps.
Babies, build a good foundation and move up, talk about definitions and and general provisions, special restrictions, road naming, addressing, that type of thing, and then we'll roll. And general provisions, special restrictions, road naming, addressing that type of thing, and then we'll roll into the next.
Cause how controversial could road naming be?
Uh, it's pretty much you.
Although, I recall. There was a big old brawl in the West End.
Yeah, there could be some of that.
Out in Pucker Huddle, as I remember.
Yeah. Is Pucker Huddle named after somebody? Who came up with that? How did it get?
I don't know, that's a good question.
Yeah.
What the history of that, it's always, that's just Pucker Huddle, that area, that's where the Puckers huddled.
That's my point.
Where the huddles were puckered up. That's pretty good, you know, we should ask the historical society, the West End, I bet, I bet they would.
We'll ask during the meeting.
Yeah, there you go. Oh, the old, that was the old Ephraim Pucker.
Ephraim Pucker, and he buried, you know. They all huddled out in the corner.
Yeah. Moving on, exactly.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you guys mind if, uh, I zoomed in and just listened to some of the discussion?
You guys can listen, I mean, that's up to you, I guess, uh, remember, it does come before you guys. To make the final decision.
You can listen.
Well, that's what I said, I wanna listen too, but I don't think either one of us should talk on it, even if we're asked a question, we shouldn't be responding.
Okay, we can, we can lay down those, cause you guys will get brought into the conversation if they know you're there.
Well, unless, like, when I was on the planning board, I'm just here as an observer, don't ask your questions, I ain't answering them.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Laura, good morning.
Do we still spread? We are still spraying, yes.
For me.
That's a fine tequila. It's probably skunk veramode. We don't ask too many questions.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's, probably would be quite effective, the whole point is to keep people away from each other.
And out of the building.
Yeah, out of the building.
I had a, years ago, I had a skunk that came in the, uh, the doggy door at my house. With predictable results, but, uh, had a commission meeting the next day, and so. Didn't get rid of all the smell. Thank goodness we're not doing that.
No.
Morning.
Good morning.
Okay, uh, maybe we start out with, uh, natural resources of the treasurer calendars here, and there's a add-on. Under new business related to the Clickatack Mill and the land donor acknowledgement form. The, uh, Mid Columbia Regional Fishery Enhancement Group, in partnership with the tribe, uh, would like to do a. Design study to, uh, come up with some options for, um. Snyder Creek as it flows through the lower one point one miles of the, of the mill. In order to apply for a standard recovery funding board grant, uh, they need, uh. The landowners to sign off on an acknowledgement form, now the form just says that you know that they're applying for the grant. It doesn't commit the county to even authorizing work on that grant, at this point, it's just saying you know they're doing it. And putting that together, we contacted Greg to make sure we characterize the county's ownership status correctly. Uh, and it came back, we might, the, the documentation at hand was unclear. Exactly how did we acquire that, is it tax title, or do we have clear ownership? I, I don't know, now I worked on this, when I came, uh, started work with the county as a consultant in two thousand one. We had a fish passage project already underway, and I don't think at that time they were doing a landowner acknowledgement form. Also, the county had been doing work to clean up the mill site, you know, there'd been a fire, so. Up until now, this has really not come up, and I don't know, Greg's been looking to see if he could find. You know, official documentation, but I don't know what the status is there, so.
Come on up. I'm curious.
Well, I'm still searching.
Still searching.
Um, so, as near as, um, we can tell in what we've been, and this has just been since Friday, that we've been pulling these informations together, and. Um, I believe that property is still a tax title property, it has a treasurer's deed to it, which states that it was. Um, which means that it would have went through the sale, and the treasurer's deed would have put it over into the tre- the county and the treasures. To hold in trust for the taxpayers, um, it's my understanding in talking to, I've, of course, I've called Lee, and I've called. Dave, and I've called anybody who would have been around back then, again, this happened in two thousand, so, um, long before I was the treasurer. Danny had some files that we dug up back into then, um, so there's been a lot of activity with this parcel. Um, in two, I think in December of two thousand, I can't, I've been pulling things together, I wanna say December. Uh, of two thousand is when a parcel became tax title. Um, but then in two thousand one, we've sold off two pieces of the actual parcel that we got. In, one to the school district for sixty-nine twenty, oh, twenty-five, and one to the fire district twelve or thirty-seven four hundred. Oh, I've talked to Gordy too, that was the other person, cause he, so Gordy informed me that he's like, oh, I, I did, cause I said, hey, do you know? And he's like, I assumed we were to take care of it, cause he's been tearing buildings down and doing things like that, so he has money into it. Um, I've had a quick call with Mr. Canal, just because he's another person that's a resource, he was. A little under the weather, so we didn't get a chance to totally go into it in depth, which we will continue to do. Um, to try to kinda ferret out, but I kinda think where we are at is that, you know, we just need to kinda start a trust account kind of a thing. To where, you know, it's okay that the money's coming in, and it's okay that the money's going out, I don't think that what the county's doing is necessarily wrong. As it's better for the county, or however the previous commission groups have chosen. But we just have to make sure that the property is not, it's not like the, um, I liken it to the piece that we bought for the bridge. Where we actually went out, paid the taxing districts off, and that now is in the county, the county's name, you know? Um, so it's, it's a piece of property, so that if the county ever wanted to get rid of that piece of property, they would do a surplus sale and get rid of it. This is still tax title, really just held in trust for the districts. Um, we don't know the exact amount, we're trying to dig through the boxes, and of course, now we're in the midst of moving file boxes from down in the. Front of the courthouse steps to somewhere else, so we, there, we're not, we're kinda still working on trying to find them. Um, but, but I do believe it's a tax title property, and I believe that the county at the time just was like, oh, well, it's our property, and so they were doing with it. As they felt was best for the citizens, um, which I'm not saying that that was wrong or anything. I just think we have to remember, at the end of the day, there are some taxes that were owed to the districts. Um, we just had a tax title sale, and all that money then goes back to the taxing districts of when we have that, so. Um, and I do believe, I don't remember who had said, maybe it was Gordy, that, you know, we kind of. Kinda got out of the way of DOE, because we said we're holding the property in trust, because it wasn't really county property, cause it was acquired through. The tax title, and trying to not have to do any cleanup down there, so I think we used that as an avenue for that method, and so now. We're kind of back to there, but that's what I've dug up just since, I think Thursday afternoon, maybe, or somewhere in there.
How, how hard will it be to identify, if it is in fact tax title? The tax, you know, what, what state did the juniors and have in it?
So, we, I mean, I think we can find it.
Thousand, I mean, cause it would, if it became.
So we're gonna, we have to post.
It'll be back into the nineties.
It would be, no, it should, it should have been posted in nine, in, right in two thousand, so.
Well, so, three years prior would be like, the taxes up for ninety-seven, ninety-eight.
No, no, correct about that, but it would have been posted in the paper as to what the.
All the numbers, so we don't.
So we're gonna go back and try to find the paper, I know we, we're, again, or the other thing is, it sometimes gets posted in. Cause we file a certificate of delinquency in the clerk's office under the courts, so that's another way we're gonna go. So, we're in the midst of trying to do some discovery, um, and again, right now's not the best ten days to be doing this. For our office, cause we're a little busy, but we're gonna try to kinda spare it some of this stuff out and see. But I think back to the Dave's kind of initial piece, I mean, I don't know, and I kinda talked to David Canal a little bit about this. I mean, we've already signed reforms stating we're the owner, and doing all these other things as the board. So I'm not sure that signing a document that says to do a fish study is gonna be the end of the world, but I do think we need to figure out. Who the owner of this property is sooner rather than later, so we can kinda figure out all the pieces, and again, I.
Wouldn't you, I mean, the way I would look, I don't have any issue with signing it, because even if we're, we're the, we're almost like the executor. And if I'm empowered as the executor, and I feel it's in the best interest of all the. The, the truck, the beneficiaries to do this, then I'm empowered to say, yeah, go ahead.
And I agree a hundred percent, the thing that I think where I'm uncomfortable at right now, is we have money coming to the county that we probably deposited into the general fund. For selling off pieces of the property.
That's a different issue.
That's a whole nother, I'm like, we need to, we need.
We're gonna have to.
We need an accountant, or an accounting piece of all the dollars, I also think the county has spent significant dollars, like in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. To do some work down there, so I think it's all gonna wash out, I do think though, that the citizens deserve to at least just see. Where all the pieces came from and went to, from the whole piece, i- in what I see where we are now, so. I don't think that it's a problem per se, I think it just kinda was one of those, and we've had it, you know, I asked my staff, I'm like, why was this not on our tax title? Cause we brought the list of tax title, and I think because it was such a hot button for a long time, it just kinda got set off to the side. As this is just a whole nother piece, and so, I, I, I mean, I, I guess I would apologize that we lost track of it, but. It just kinda was out there, and now all of a sudden, it's like, we're gonna go back and figure it out, so. Um, but I do believe it to be tax title property, and, and I mean, you know, I don't have even a guess of what the taxes would be. Um, I think, you know, but yes, I would agree with you, I think it's in the best interest, and you're kinda the, we're the trustee, and it, it seems to be working, and. You know, so, but that's what I know of today.
So I guess, um, for that application, um, do we need to have all those qualifiers on it? Because if we're practically the trustees, we can just sign the little thing and say, the, the owner, we are owner, signing. Without all the qualifications that will throw red flags for the state.
Right. I mean, we've done it.
I'm, I'm okay. I mean, if you look at the REITs that came through. It says Clickatack County on the REIT form, and, I mean, cause we're going back, I mean, obviously, that, we go back to the deed to really. I mean, that's really the form of who has the property and so on and so forth. Um, David Canal and I did talk, and we were thinking of maybe running a, having the title company do a title report on it. Even though we have access to all the records, they might have a different perspective or something of how they do it, so that might be worthy of something that we're talking about doing. And I told David I would get ahold of him later, um, in the week, and we would kinda figure it out, I mean, I don't, I think there's a short term piece of what Dave's doing. And then there's kind of, I don't wanna say a long term, but another couple of weeks or something to try to figure out where the rest of this thing lies.
And, and note that we've got an interim deadline of this Friday for them to get a preliminary application in. So they'll need the form for that, and then there's like a two months of, of this proposal getting kicked around with technical committees, et cetera. And getting finalized, so that the deadline for the finals, July, uh, June twenty-eighth. So, you know, we'll have a couple of months, if something pops up that. Causes us to want to withdraw, we could, we could.
We could always do that.
Yeah.
And I would say for me, if I'm being fair, the analysis of what I, I, I have a different relationship. If I'm the trustee to the beneficiaries versus if the county just owns it. So I mean, it is a minds, like, I may have ideas, or, and the board can have a discussion about what it wants to do with it. But if we're the, if we're the trustee for the beneficiaries. I'm not saying the analysis is gonna not end up in the same place, but it's, you have to kinda shift in your head. So we, that could, depending on when we get clarification in the next couple of months. I, I don't know why it would change, but it could potentially. Cause now I'm looking after the interest of the school district and the fire district and the, and that's a different analysis that I'm looking after the county.
And we're gonna see how much money we've spent in all that.
I suspect we, they owe us more than we owe them.
I would agree, I would suspect.
As usual.
Yes, yes, and, and so that's kinda the key, and I think really all that in my perspective is, is that we just need a good. Uh, listing of the expenses that have been going through and where they've been gone, and when we really haven't. I mean, again, I think because the property had been in the ecology, you know, nobody was.
Right.
Dark, so to speak, and it just kinda was there, I think everybody just kinda put it aside, and was like, okay, that's a huge mess right there. Which it is. So, yeah, so, so that's what we know, um, and where, I, I mean, I'm, I, I don't suspect we're gonna find anything. Other than what we've kinda talked about in different pieces, um, so we're going through and trying to just kinda create a file of all the. The REITs and the deeds and, and go on and so forth, and then we'll meet with the PA, um, when he's ready, and then go from there, but. I guess, yes, I wanted to make sure we had a discussion about it, like, when I talked to Dave, I'm like, we need to just make sure we're all on the same page. Sooner rather than later, cause I, I, I was, I, I guess I really hadn't dug that far into it, it was just kinda there and plug along.
Okay.
Questions, yes.
I, uh, I'm in favor of, uh, spending the money on the title report, um, I wanna put some push on this. And hopefully, um, we're gonna get, uh, Public Works to get through the process of getting it off the list. And then we need to know these answers, and we need to know these answers, and so I would ask that, if we're gonna do this on this parcel. It would also be good to know about the, that triangle parcel in Dallasport that we have. Um, and if we need to run a title report on that, that's, that's good money spent for the future.
Which one's the title, which one's the triangle parcel?
No.
Are you talking surplus than?
Surplus, right, but there's some question as to how we got it, what the.
And if we're doing it, I'd like to do them both at the same time, so that we can start making these discussions about where, what direction we're gonna go on this parcel.
And, uh, and I guess as the treasurer, I would ask that, um, from my perspective, I, I need another fifteen days or some change to try to get. Cause I think, yes, this is important, but bringing in all the dollars is the number one thing for our group, so if we can get the reports ordered. And some of that, and let them percolate at the title companies, then we can come back at a point in May, cause I don't know. I mean, even to try to get ahold of David and everything, it's, it's just, the next ten days are just gonna be a little busy.
Well, if you ask the title report now, you might have it in two months.
Well, yeah, we. So we'll, we'll work through that, but yes.
If I ask for it, yeah, it'll be two months.
Right. I don't know if we get priority, but we do a lot of work with the title companies, so, and, and, you know, we can figure out where all these pieces are and go through, but I do think that's a good one. So, I guess the question is, as far as a comprehensive list, are you, is there other properties? Other than this triangle property in Dallasport that you're, is that just the only other one?
No, but.
Why don't, why don't we do this, why don't we get this, I'll find the par- parcel for the triangle property, and then I'll come, and we'll have a discussion about the rest of this. And we'll kinda figure out a good way to move, so that we're doing it deliberately and intentionally, so that we're not.
Cause I think we have, cause we, I think we have a kinda policy decision to make about, you know, we have a bunch of properties that. We've wired over, and that we need to surplus them and get rid of them.
Right.
So we need to go parcel by parcel and make the determination, and part of that is understanding what we can do. And not, you know, again, if you'd asked me last week, oh yeah, Clickatack, no, that county owns that outright.
Me too.
Whatever we want with it, let's surplus it, or if there's, you know, whatever, and it's like a surprise, so our assumptions about other things. We don't actually know that either.
So I'd like to say that this, once, this is our only remaining tax title parcel, um, because we got rid of the other one, so we only have this one potentially. That's remaining from our list.
That we know of.
That we know of.
That we know of, correct, yes.
So how does that work, if, if they owe us more than we owe them, cause we spent twenty years working on it, then does it just roll into us? Or how does that work?
Um, I don't know, I think, well, that's a question, we're gonna have to kinda ferret out and figure out, I mean, it's not just, I don't think anything just rolls in. I think there's gonna have to be a process of something transitioning from one to the other and going through the process, so. I, I'm gonna call other treasurers and see if anybody's had that happen before, and, and figure out kind of how, how some of those, I, I don't know. I, that's a good question, um, I would think that if we got to the end, and the county had invested two hundred thousand dollars in this property. And the outstanding taxes were twenty-five, then, you know, it would make sense that when you netted it out, that it would be able to go through there. And everything would move forward, um, or we would do, I don't know, I, or we would acquire it, and then we could surplus it, and if we did, whatever. I, I, I think there's multiple scenarios, and I think we're gonna have to work with the PA's office on exactly how, but it, it doesn't. But it, it doesn't just roll to the county by default. I mean, it's gonna have to get there by intent and process.
Yeah. Okay. You're gonna be able, be able to track down those dollars when they bought those parcels and whether it was part of, you know, their tax title. I mean, did we actually get the dollars from it when we sold those?
That's a question I'm gonna try to track down. But I mean, I have the real estate contracts right in here. They're recorded with the auditors.
Was that their interest and they released it?
And that could be too. We don't know. Yeah. And that's a whole thing. And like you said, that's exactly right. We're dealing with districts and and I think we're gonna have to kind of peel, this is gonna be a peel back the onion
Right.
situation. And it's gonna, every layer is gonna be a little interesting in and of itself. But I think it'll be good. And I think it will be also good just to have a good accounting of what has happened from two thousand current. And the other one is just to find out, I also have no idea how much the taxes are that were on the parcel. I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. So we'll be able to go back and figure that out.
Right. And there are two, two parcel, at least two parcels upstream of us. Uh, that were, my understanding, acquired in an auction at the county.
They all, right. That, that's the situation, I guess, a little bit that, so there was the whole mill site, I believe, was for sale at that tax title auction. But there was multiple different parcels on there. The parcel we've ended up with was the one that was the least likely to have a, or the most likely to have a problem. I think the rest of them all sold and, and folks have, they're in, they're in private ownership and taxes are being like, I'm assuming paid unless we are for working or closing, but I don't believe that they're, I'm pretty sure they're
So would it be your, so if the parcel went through auction and nobody bid on it, then would we be in the same situation where we are still holding it in trust? But we would have the option, since nobody bid on, just like on the bridge property, we don't have to have another auction. We could deter, we could decide, we could pay off the juniors and then clear the title. There is no, we don't have to go through another process.
Yep. And we'll look at the amounts of money that they paid us supposedly for the parcels, the, the pieces that they got. Cause I think Fire District twelve has built a fire hall on the one piece of property right there. Um, and I think the school has built a community center or something with that. So, um, so yeah, we'll have to go through all of those and figure out. And remember, tax title property, when the dollars are sent, spent, or or when the dollars are received, just like with the stuff we just got, we use the twenty twenty-one levy distribution rate. So it will be distributed as of what it would be today.
Not what it was.
Right.
Which is interesting, because you could actually have a district that didn't exist.
That would get some
That would get
Or you could have a district that did exist that went away.
What happens to that?
Uh, that's where it goes because it doesn't matter because you're using today, you're using today's
Oh, you subvert it.
That's why you do it.
You divvy it up by what, who's ever
Correct. So we take the tax, like, right, TCA twelve, look at all the districts that are in there and the percentages and allocate it, just like if somebody were to pay their taxes. Oh my gosh, this is another folder. Yeah. Oh, nice.
So I just ran, ran my math. It's currently assessed at forty eight thousand eight hundred and eighty, which divided times point oh one for one percent is four hundred and eighty-eight dollars a year times twenty years, ninety seven hundred and sixty. And then you have the interest and all that, that, that they're entitled to, right?
For what's this now? What are you doing?
Dude, I don't think they get it, like, we don't have to pay, you know, from the time it was owed to
No, the interest, no, you don't go back. You just, it's what it was at what time. The, the interest doesn't keep accruing while it's in tax title state.
Okay.
It just goes
Pay whatever the debt was again, or the
Do we pay whatever the debt was then? Or do they get to keep acquiring it over the last twenty years?
We've done, the way we've done the recent one is the, what it was at tax title. We, that's the amount we paid at that time.
It's like a twenty-year free one.
Well, I mean, there's nobody paying this.
We put more money into a seven thousand dollar property.
We know we put more money in that distance staff.
Yeah. Well, we're gonna find that out. And it'd be good to have that on a piece of paper. So we're not assuming.
Okay.
All right. So, uh, the landowner form that's in your packet has the attachment. And so maybe I'll, if you're comfortable signing without going into the weeds with the attachment, I'll go in and edit that a little bit and get it back to you. So it'll be ready for you this afternoon.
We're, we're good. So
All right. Thank you.
Yes. Do you need anything else?
Okay.
Thank you, Gary.
Yo, thank you. Good luck. That's been interesting. A lot of these kinds of files show up when you start asking questions.
Well, the desktop.
We're still talking about that a little bit. Uh, Whitney, uh, set up a phone meeting with her and, and Richard to talk to the, uh, uh, see John Day about a brownfield project that they had. And it was fairly interesting, maybe some lessons to be learned there. But I guess that project was successful. Uh, speaking of Whitney, she's doing her spring round of well monitoring. And thank you, Commissioner Anderson, for going out and doing some training and handing off the ball there. Much appreciated. Got them out in the field. Uh, one other thing to touch on briefly, uh, in uh, natural resources, uh, U S Fish and Wildlife is getting sued over not listing a number of species, one of which is the monarch butterfly. Uh, they determined that it warranted listing, but was precluded by other priorities. So that's, you know, a, a likely listing that's coming our way that because uh, but butterflies are present in the county. And if you look, they're an obligate species for milkweed. They need that, uh, their young caterpillars eat that. Uh, and we have uh, showy and narrowleafed, uh, uh, milkweed are nat- native species through Clickatatt County. So we can expect something there. Ask Whitney to take a, a look at that. And, you know, maybe there's an opportunity, not unlike what we did with the landowners and county property, looking at that critical habitat designation. Are, is there some conservation program we can do that uh, uh, would make it such that designating, you know, significant areas of the county is critical habitat might not be worth it. But anyway, pretty early in that, but that's, that's, that's coming. I don't know how that suit's gonna come out. If they're just gonna settle. So. So, uh, so we're gonna be talking butterflies in the future. Anything else on natural resources for, move on to economic development, uh, tourism, uh, the, uh, application deadline for tourism promotion co- uh, grants is the end of this month. Uh, we have done some outreach to try to get to others like rodeo, uh, Lords and Bickleton and Glenwood. We did get contacted by, uh, We Rock Events. Uh, they are not a nonprofit and you need to be a nonprofit. I guess they've worked in the past with the chamber, suggested that. I understand it might've been a little bit of a challenging thing last year. And that may have been, I don't know the details. It, there was, uh, you know, is there promoting an event last year in the face of the coronavirus closures? That might've been why that
That would probably be pretty challenging.
Uh, um, you said rodeos. What about that, uh, rodeo Bible camp that qualified if they're a nonprofit? Yes. Yep. Has there been any outreach to them? Or should I make some outreach to them? Hmm, I have not. Have you contacted them?
I've never heard of them. So I didn't.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not familiar with I will contact them and then probably send them to, do you want to send to him or do you? Uh, I think you can send them to me and I'll forward it to him if he's, you know. He wants to use. Been busy, so.
Could we use Seek for some of these? Like, like there's the, the big, um, mud thing up in Glenwood, but it's, it's not a nonprofit. Could we use Seek to spend?
Potentially, or, or again, chambers of commerce would be a good place because they're pretty heavily engaged in tourism.
Yeah.
Uh, so they'll do some of these smaller events, you know, when you look at their proposals for what they're doing, they'll be promoting various events in there. So there are others that are, are getting captured in that. So. Okay. That's sort of the umbrella there. And then, and again, the deadlines, uh, the thirtieth, so. Um, maybe touch on some of the emergency grants to small businesses, uh, in the county. Uh, Working Washington four, um, as of April seventh, and the grant application period closed on the ninth, there were twenty-five businesses that applied, Clickatatt County businesses. Uh, I suspect there are more and we don't know where they are in the process of awarding those, determining how much. But last I heard of that program, it was looking pretty good in that they want to make sure it spreads geographically and um, there seemed to be a little less in terms of activity of app, fewer applications than they were anticipating might occur. So we're, I think there's a good chance a bunch of them get funded. Uh, paycheck protection program, that is the biggie that's out there, uh, promoted heavily, uh, that grant, the, the latest round of that closes at the end of May. Uh, but we're hearing that there are some problematic applications at a national level that they're clearing those out. So money's starting to move fast as they address those applications with questions. Uh, we got some information on the application and, and for I, I believe yesterday, uh, in Clickatatt County, there's been an award of like thirty-three million five hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, which is significant. We got here, there were three thousand six hundred and ninety-eight, uh, not, no, four hundred and seventy-nine businesses, but that, I think we need to go in and tease out who got round one plus round two. So the number's gonna be short of that.
So, but that thirty-three million is the total aggregate?
Yes.
Four hundred and seventy-nine businesses.
Yep. But again, the, the number of businesses will actually be fewer, correct, Richard?
Yeah. So the, this, I just hit a raw count of it. Uh, I didn't tease out which ones have been double counted. There wasn't that many.
Also, the four seventy-niners not, some of those could be
Yeah, that, that's on the higher end. But if you look at it like, you know, a standard error, you know, we're looking at well, still well over four hundred businesses that have been able to pay that. Thirty-three million dollars, that's in total. So even if they got one and two, you know, that they're still getting those federal dollars. And just, uh, as a reminder for that paycheck protection program, um, what that is, is a, um, yeah, basically a company just says, we're not gonna lay these people off. And as long as we get reimbursed from the federal government, we're gonna keep them on the payrolls so that they don't have to go through unemployment. And so, yeah, so we're still looking at well over four hundred businesses, uh, thirty-three million dollars total. And then as far as raw numbers without, you know, there are gonna be some doubles in that. As far as the amount of employees impacted would be, uh, just shy of thirty-seven hundred. But even if you take out, in my opinion, even if you take out those doubles, they're still looking at well over two thousand employees, two to three thousand employees that have been impacted. And, you know, with the county of twenty thousand, our labor force is about ten thousand. You're looking at at least twenty, thirty percent of our labor base being positively impacted by that paycheck protection program. And again, I, I think the, the reason why we have such a high number of, uh, people that have been able to engage on that, on that end is, uh, just, just do the chambers. I know, um, Commissioner Anderson had sent out a bunch of stuff and really, uh, got on top of that during the, during last year and stuff like that. So uh, I think the marketing on that was, was, was really good. So, and then I've also gotta break it down. Um, I don't know if you guys want to keep, uh, I can break it down a little bit by region if you'd like.
I, I, we have time. Go ahead.
Okay. So Goldendale altogether. And again, this is the higher end. I'm not, you know, there's a few that have been double counted as well. On the higher end, Goldendale had a hundred and thirty-six businesses that have been enrolled. Um, Bickleton, nine. Centerville, twenty-two businesses. Um, Dallasport, eight. Lyle, thirty. Charles Lake, twenty-three. Glenwood and Mochaycus, eleven. There's only one Mochaycus. Uh, White Salmon, a hundred and ninety-six businesses. And Benjen, thirty-four.
Great.
I can figure out what the one would take.
Is Woodruff Mill, there used to be, I would, I would, Woodruff Mill would be who I would guess up on, up on the top.
I can check.
Or, or No, I don't know. Not, not that I'm aware of, but I don't get up there with them.
The, the guy that applied for our local stuff and he's part of a burial thing.
Oh, yeah. There's, what, what's the name of that? Yeah.
Natural.
Natural burial, burial.
So was, was, um, uh, In Situ incorporated into Benjen or White Salmon?
So In Situ did not, I did not see In Situ on that payroll larger, because of that link to Boeing, I believe. Yeah. I, I did, I did not see them on there. I know that their supply chain averaged about about two to three hundred thousand dollars.
Piece.
Yeah, for, for each program. So out of both of them, um, they probably got about five hundred thousand approximately a piece. Um, so there's one here in Goldville. I won't say who it is, but they got about two and a half million. Um, that was the largest one that I saw. Um, I would say that the vast, like, if you think about it, it has like a bell curve, like the distribution of it. I'd say the vast majority of these, like the, the overwhelming majority of these were small sole proprietorships with one to two employees. And many of them range down into just a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars for wages.
My name's not on that list. Kind of wish it was, but. You have until the end of May. Super proprietor, so I didn't qualify. Um, and then there's another program coming soon, uh, uh, restaurant revitalization fund, some of the new American Rescue Plan legislation. So they got twenty-eight point six billion there. Uh, businesses will not be required to pay the money back if they spend it on allowable expenditures through March eleventh, twenty twenty-three. So that's gonna be helpful with Is this restaurant fund also including bars? Yes. And I believe it includes wineries as well, as long as a, a certain percentage, not just, you know, thirty percent or more of the businesses is face-to-face sales there.
And when this gets ready to get, when, do they have a date for the launch on there?
It's just assumed that there was a, a, a website that they stood up last this, this past weekend. So, and I've not had a chance to dig in. Uh, I'm not seeing a date there. Uh, I did see that they're gonna run a trial period, uh, pilot application periods. It'll be for a couple of weeks. So we're probably a month off anyway.
Okay. And you, is that list that we put in for Working Washington three of all the restaurants and bars and wineries?
Yeah, I got to touch with all of those people. Yeah. Yeah. So on, on that, it's, it's, you know, based on, you know, the ca- uh, the impact of COVID nineteen on your revenue. Uh, maximum award for the one business is ten million for any one location. It's a five million. But they, but there's, there's some targeting in there, uh, you know, toward underserved communities, low income, uh, et cetera, et cetera. So there's some of that. Again, I haven't had a chance to dig into it.
One, one thing to mention is, is that the SBA loans, um, and the, the ten thousand dollar grant advance that bid that got put out, um, that has gotten extended. So say you only had one employee and you got a thousand dollars, you can get the other nine thousand dollars only if you're in a low income area. So pretty much my entire district doesn't count. But everybody else in the county is good. And, uh, those emails aren't getting sent out to everybody who got those SBA advance grant advances. Like, if you're in District one and you don't, pretty much.
Okay. But is District one, well, like too much money over there?
Not considered low income.
Low, yeah. Above, I think median wage household income somewhere like seventy thousand, I believe, when we're looking at defining the opportunity zones, we're able to get you know, a census tract.
Right.
Includes Lyle in and then all the way east.
But nothing in District one.
Uh, uh, Richard's, uh, maybe, Richard, you can, I'll just turn to you.
Richard Bolton, so.
Turn to Richard, turn around.
Turn to Richard.
Well.
I bet he'll be right now.
See how little shadow left in the bush? Um, so So, you know, he's, he's. And in, in terms of business retention expense, he's managed to secure some incumbent worker training. Dollars to train, I think it's fifty-five employees for one of our aerospace companies. So that's coming up and then he's working with another, one of the companies to see if we can secure. Some funding for incumbent worker training there as well. He's working with. Workforce Board, South Central Workforce Board, there you are, you're back to saying that. I, I said, speak, Richard, and you were gone. So on the workforce, uh, training, uh, well, actually not the, the training, but the job fair square, are we on those?
Yeah, so I, I've spoken with South Central Workforces, Urban Council. Uh, they're completely on board with it. I know last year we had talked about it. And, uh, really just kind of bad timing with all those other grants that were coming through the pipeline. But it did give them an opportunity last year to go through it a few times. So they got it pretty well. They, they got the process down pretty well, takes them about five weeks. I've already reached out to the Goldville School District, they're on board with it. And so now the only thing I got left to do is, is to round up some businesses that are looking to hire. I already have a few in mind. Um, I have not reached out to the one in White Salmon, uh, not yet anyways, so. But we'll, we'll see how it all comes together. I know that typically, at least in the past. The job fairs out of Goldville typically get a higher percentage of people that are looking to go straight to work full-time right out of the gate, so. And, and what's, what's interesting as far as the. I guess the, the reach is, is there are more, in the same, it's, it's anecdotal, but. I, I see a lot more interest coming out of White Salmon, their manufacturing companies looking to hire people out of Goldville. So because it's only an hour commute. They have been pulling out of Vancouver, but they, at, at least for the, the lower to mid, mid-tier manufacturing, they're looking. Hiring more and more on Goldville, so there's already a number of employees here that.
That works out there.
Can't afford to live there.
You can't afford to live there. Maybe a little update on the EDA grant, where are we there?
Yeah, so, um, Commissioner Anderson, I'm pretty sure is already up to date with it. The airport board approved a lease. Agreement between the. Columbia Beach Community College and it's going to be a twenty-year lease. That's going to take into effect if we're awarded the federal EDA dollars. The federal EDA basically wanted that, so now it's going to come into our court to sign it and cities, the, the city will sign it. Call it will sign it once all three parties sign it. I will be submitting that pretty promptly. Uh, it's the internal deadline for me anyways is, is May thirtieth. I want to have it all sent in, entire package. And I think we're, we're well underway to have that accomplished. There's a, there's a few other items on that list that, that I'm. Terminally addressing as well, but that, that lease is, is the main, the main one. Once, once that lease is, is signed by all the different parties. That's going to provide the majority of the, of the insurance that the EDA is wanting to have, so.
When will we expect to answer on the EDA?
Well, uh, in the past, I've given you timelines and they've all been wrong. I really don't know. I know, I know that the Investment Review Committee typically looks at it. Quarterly, I don't know where that's going to be at summer time. But I would like to say this, and I'd like to just reiterate, I do think it's promising. I don't know where they're going to come out on this. They typically don't look at projects three times, much less three times in the same fiscal year. So it's an internal policy for them that they will look at one project, they'll give you a cherry forward notice in a letter. Uh, and they, they typically won't look at it again within the same fiscal year, they'll bump it back a year. They, they're now, and they want to see it, um, because I thought we weren't going to do it.
Right.
Until October, that, that's what, that, that's what my, uh, our initial meeting, that's what they said. Uh, pretty much verbatim, like, don't let me see it until next fiscal year. And then they came back after about a month and said, you know, where, where are you at on it? So it's, uh, they're, they're looking at, trying to, trying to push us through, so. It's either promising or they're already got a note made up in the.
Go ahead, send it in and let's get it on the table, right?
Okay, so I, I think your extended agenda has, uh, on a contract amendment for the Goldendale Chamber. And we, for decades, been contracting with the Chamber to provide economic development support. They're a key partner. In twenty twenty, and that's typically, at least since I've been in this business, been fifteen thousand a year. Last year, we made, amended that to increase the funding by ten thousand dollars to provide support. In COVID response, getting word out, in particular, they've been helpful. They've also been coordinating. Some, uh, training programs with the SBDC across the, across the river to help with that. For the Goldendale Chamber, out of the. Twenty-five thousand that we did, there's, there's still a, a balance there of about ten thousand, a little north of ten thousand. Last year we talked, and you may remember, Chairman Soder, we talked about maybe carrying that money forward if they didn't spend it. So that's basically what this amendment does. Instead of issuing a new contract, I'm proposing just to amend it and add the traditional. Fifteen thousand and. That gets us to the forty. I, uh, just got word back from Mount Adams Chamber. A very, you know, the same, the same contract amendment will be coming to you for the, for them. They just. Agreed that it looks, the amendment looks good to them. I need to, uh, forward that to the prosecutor for his review and. As soon as I get that, we'll have that to you as well.
Same dollarments?
Yes.
A lot more.
They're carried, of course. Goldendale's Chambers. Executive Director started retiring at the end of last year, so, and, and they had, had trouble coming up. They didn't have, you know. Qualifying expenditures, that sort of thing. Mount Adams Chamber, they're carrying forward with more like thirty-three hundred instead of ten thousand. They were, they were.
Where is the Goldendale Chamber on, uh, new?
Nicole and Dean is in the interim. Executive Director. I just got word of that yesterday.
Okay.
Uh, so I don't know where they're, what they're doing in, in terms of a search for that.
Okay.
The SBDC, uh, Small Business Development Center, the position advertisement closed yesterday, so. You know, so there are hiring processes, there'll be screening applicants and then at some point there will be an opportunity for. The counties to participate in that selection process, but we're waiting on that. I'm not sure how long there.
Back up, sorry, just to make sure, you said Nicole was what now?
The, an interim executive director?
For the Chamber.
For the Chamber of Commerce?
Interesting. Cause I have it as Diana Adams.
She's the president.
Well, okay, that's, the last I heard she was both. They might have announced Nicole as being the, recently.
I got an email from her last, Nicole last night about five o'clock.
Cause she was both and then that's probably what happened.
Sorry, just clarifications.
And the Bullland's inventory is moving forward and we'll have that presented. At the EDA Board meeting next, in the next month.
Yeah, good.
And, uh, Richard, you're going to be off, the Marines are going to claim Richard for June. Uh, and then you're going to some, to Alaska, you need to go Alaska through July, so we're going to. Lose as much, much of June and July as you're.
This, this one was odd thing, I haven't, because of COVID, I haven't gone to any sort of military obligations in like a year. So I figured they'd smash me up for a month and give you a. There's been a, I feel like I forgot how to run my camp setting up.
I'm sure you'll, I'm sure you'll, uh, you'll remember, right to bicycle up.
Whitney's online too, if there's anything you need updates from her about. She's on the Zoom.
No, I just, I must ask her, does, she'd sit in in case you had questions on the, on the mill project or. Or actually anything else she's doing. I think, I think we got everything covered.
Have we had any contact with the Glenwood Fire Department on their potential EDA grant?
Richard, you did talk to them?
I did. Yeah, that, that was coming from my field from me. I gotta, I gotta look into it.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I just.
But there has been a discussion, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
No preparation for an answer.
I like that. No, I like the look, is I see that in the mirror sometimes myself.
Or in the headlights.
Or in the headlights, yeah. Okay, any questions? Thanks, Richard. Where are you going, or you can't tell if you have to kill?
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not that special. So for two weeks, they have me going over to Norfolk, Virginia as a watch chief. So they're like their, their center of operation. And, and I basically just, I still don't know what I'm doing. It's supposed to be like training, but it's also, it's supposed to be for the hurricane season. So hopefully it's not really that hurricane season where they need to be experienced in there, but I'm not. So then, then the fall.
We don't have a lot of hurricanes around here, so.
No, yeah, so there, yeah, it's going to be on the East Coast and then I come back for, you know, this is how the military does things. To help prevent paying you full benefits, is they'll, they'll put like two or three day breaks, so they'll.
Oh, bring you back.
Home for literally a week and then I fly back down to, uh, LA, Port Wine, Eevee. And that's where they're going to be practicing a lot of their, their, their engineers, so they're practicing building bridges and stuff like that, so.
What is your MLFs? What are you doing there?
Uh, by trade, I'm an artilleryman, but right now, uh, for them, I'm a military advisor. It seems. It seems odd, they could, you know, US Navy, the best in the world, that they need a military advisor, but. They do need advising on defensive tactics for like building bases and stuff like that, and that's what I do a lot of with artillery, so. I just advise them on.
Where you would land the shells if you were shooting the shells.
Yeah, yeah, so.
They'll put it there. Okay, good.
And thank you for your service.
Did you guys see, uh, Kenneth McKeon change his name to He Who Watches?
Did you see Ruby's?
Yeah.
I, I did like the He Who Watches.
Yeah, He Who Watches, that's good.
Since he's never spoke up on it, maybe his mic doesn't work.
I don't think he has. Bring up the call one here, since it's a comment, when he tries to put him on the. Talk about the weather.
Yes. Anything else anybody wants to bring up before we break for lunch?
We didn't get a blue card today, did we?
It's like right there. Oh, it's the other one, last week's?
Last week's as well.
Oh, I was gonna say.
And then we're just talking about self-prostration and workforce, there's a new. Um, contract update. With some state mumbo jumbo, small changes that's going through prosecutor, it will be known for us shortly, but thought I'd throw that in.
Isn't that for, um, between the hospital and the three school districts, that one coming through Swatch, or are you talking something different?
Something there.
Not the one that's on the consent.
No, it's the whole, it's the whole, I guess I would say their whole mission statement, whatever, Swatch, some of the. Legal definitions are wrong and it's just changing basic wording.
All right, well, if there's no, any other burning stuff, I guess we will recess for lunch. We will be back at one o'clock. Bye, folks. Bye, He Who Watches.
You're muted.
Yep.
Apparently Lee has muted everybody. So we'll start over. Roger, Mr. Gadway, do you wish to address the board? Just a minute, we're still not hearing you. Is he unmuted?
Do you want to call on somebody else just to make sure?
We'll come, we'll come back to you, uh, Mr. Gadway, once we get that figured out.
Pick a regular caller.
Okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to make citizen comment? Please unmute yourself. Let's see, I don't see anybody unmuted, but. Yes, can someone please make comments so we can see if our system is working? Unmute yourself at star six. If you're on a phone.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Okay, our, our end is working, thank you, Lynn.
All right. Now I was just asked to unmute to see if we.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Gradway is muted.
Muted.
I have a comment. I have a comment.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
First, El Demick, fifty-five Tucker Hill Road. I caught your interview this morning on K L P K. And, uh, it looked like there was three topics, one being the fees, um, that you guys were still addressing the fees. And I went through and I looked at those zoning ordinances under chapter five, one point six. And it says that projects, I think they're going to see one million dollars in valuable or status fee projects. It says that the applicant will be billed for the county's actual cost, including staff costs, fees and consulting, etc. So I was just wondering why, um, applicants or why the, um, citizens who want to appeal these cases, why they were charged. A four thousand dollar fee, um, and it states that, and I was running arguments, that the applicant, um, will be billed for those. And then, um, the second topic was the Citizens Advisory Committee. Um, Commissioner Sodar, you said that there was no media plan to develop that. Um, in the EOZ, in fiction, or chapter two point seven, it says the applicant shall form a, a technical advisory committee. Before the project construction, after all the permit appeals are closed. And for the Linn Hall project, I was just, um, wondering how a citizen would go about being on that committee. Um, and it's very indeed a committee that is set up for the Linn Hall project. And, um, the third topic was public hearings, um, and I wanted to, I wanted to point out that. There's, um, a lot of things that we're seeing that are overlooked, um, with these, these people meditations. And as our, um, super responsible official, um, as they move these things to non, non-significant. Um, it seems like another being pushed through and that would be, you know, that would be more. Um, it seems like another being pushed through and that would be, you know, that would be more people appealing these processes. Um, for instance, on page two twelve of the draft EIS for Linn Hill project. I had inquired, um, from the planning department about the emergency management plan. And I was directed to go look at it. And when I did look at it on page two twelve, um, it says it's the Empire Solar Project. Um, and none of the, none of the wording was changed for what to do in emergency response, um, on that document. And so I just feel as though, you know, if these projects are being overlooked, um, for things like that, that things are just copied and pasted from another project. We can see, um, you know, foresee more of these hearings becoming more of a, an issue. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Okay, we are in citizen comment. Let's go to Roger Gadway, who has been patiently, uh, trying to speak to us. Can we hear you now? Doesn't look like it.
Never seen a mouth move, though.
If you're on Zoom and you're trying to unmute, if you roll your mouse over the bottom left-hand corner, it will say join audio or unmute yourself in that corner. So if you're having Zoom technical difficulties.
Right. And if you're on a tablet, iPad, that same thing is on the top of the screen and it says join audio. So with a green arrow. If not, you, you keep working on that. I'm gonna go through. Okay, we are in citizen comment. Are there other citizens who wish to speak to the board? This is your opportunity. I see that seven, seven, three, 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 seven, six has unmuted.
Hey, good day, gentlemen. How you doing? This is, uh, uh, He Who Watches.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Hey, I got some good news for you, pal, fellows. Uh, the fact that the price of lumber is so high right now, uh, piece plywood's fifty bucks. Dave, you're, you're familiar with construction. Evidently, the price of lumber is gonna add twenty-eight thousand dollars to a new home, the cost of a new home. Well, here in the county, we have a company called Osscrete. And Osscrete makes, uh, environmentally, uh, unique homes. They, uh, they have a proprietary, proprietary technology for constructing green energy efficient homes. And gives them ability to build, to build an affordable home at approximately two-thirds the price of a wooden house at a hundred to a hundred and dot, ten dollars a square foot. Uh, they, they, their company is right down there in the, uh, where the old aluminum plant is. And with the price of lumber, it seems to me like their technology could be the, uh, a, a, a huge, uh, 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 alternative to using wood in construction. And so I see Dave McClure, the economic development director, is on, on the, on with us today. And there, if you go, do a little search and there's phone numbers, there's people to contact. They'll probably give you a tour of their facilities. I think they're kind of struggling right now. They need investors. And if you look up the ticker, ticker price on it, it's selling for fifteen cents a share right now. So a thousand dollars is gonna get you close to seven thousand shares in the company. It would provide many, many jobs to the county. And it, in a time when it looks to me like we're gonna be phasing out wood for construction. And, and these Oss, Oss, I'm sorry, these Osscrete homes use very little wood. And I just wanted to bring it up, I pointed out to you that we have the potential to help this company become huge, the way things are turning out. And so if Dave McClure is, uh, listening, sir, would you please contact the owner down there? He, I've met him, I met him out here at the city council, city council, uh, when he was, uh, buying land out here in the, uh, uh, industrial park. And you can call him, you can talk to him, they'll probably invite you down to take a look around their factory. What they do is they form the walls, you pick a, you pick a architectural design that you want. They form the walls, you come and get them and put them on up by yourself. But, uh, here is, his name is, uh, John Sprovieri, S P R O V I E R I. Just do a search for Osscrete. And if you go to osscreethomes.com, you'll see a bunch of the homes that they have created, the designs, and they're beautiful, they're excellent. They're, uh, they are excellent, they don't, uh, let's see, it says. They, the added benefits of using Osscrete include not only great thermal efficiency and soundproofing, but it will not burn. It's impervious to insect infestation, rot, mold, and it has exceptionally low maintenance needs. And the strength of concrete to defy adverse environmental conditions. The life of Osscrete structures is measurable not in years, but in centuries. And that's right here in Clickatack County. So I, I hope, uh, I hope the economic development, uh, uh, department maybe would, uh, take some steps to help this guy. He, and anybody listen, hear my voice right now, get, go invest, invest in this company. You can become a millionaire if you get in at the right time, if it takes off. That's all I had to say for today, and thank you for the good work that you're doing.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, bye.
Bye now. Okay, we are still in citizen comment. Please unmute yourself, uh, raise your hand, and you can address the board. Anybody? See anybody other than?
I haven't seen Roger's mouth. Yeah, I heard Roger, seen Roger's mouth move either, so.
Yes, I will comment, I bought, uh, half a unit of plywood yesterday and it was a half a month's salary, so. Okay. Okay, we are still in citizen comment, so if any citizen wishes to speak up, this is your opportunity.
Trying to call.
Okay, I'm seeing, uh.
Four nine zero.
Four nine zero one, the phone number ending in that, looks like you're trying to say something, is that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Good afternoon, commissioners, this is Sherry Bosque at one twenty Houston Street, Houston, Washington. And, um, I've been wondering how citizens can get involved, um, with our county? And have not just the moratorium, this isn't what I'm speaking about, just to make that clear. But on other processes such as other ordinances or processes of, such as the conditional use permit, um, and codes and things like that. How do we as citizens ask our county to update, to firm up, you know, perhaps procedures of how we handle certain processes? Is there a way citizens can go about that? Is there, do we do petitions? Do we just ask? How, how do you go about that as a citizen to ask for process changes? Not so much changes, but, you know, just looking to show up exactly how these processes operate from A to Z. Is there a way citizens can go about, um, putting a proposal in or asking our county to consider such an idea? Or have you ever had citizens ask to propose ideas like this?
Good question.
Um, that's, that's, that is a good question, Sherry. We generally, um, you know, we have public involvement when we are doing, uh, you know, code update, you know, basically changing rules. But I'm not really, I can't think of an example of when we've had a discussion about how processes, you know, how we do processes. Many of the processes, the, the procedures are actually stated, are set out in state law, in statute. And so we don't have any control, you know, as far as like the public processes that mandate, you know, a public hearing and within so many days. And then the comment period, a lot of that is, is prescriptive, it's, it's in the law, uh, that governs that. But there is, I, I suspect there are some aspects of processes that we have some local discretion over. And I'm, I'm not really sure, that's a, that's a really good question. As far as if we, uh, if a citizen wanted to, uh, have a discussion about how those processes work? And what could be changed, how they would go about doing that?
That, that's exactly what I would like to know. Because although I believe, you know, yes, there needs to be processes. But at the end of the day, I, you know, I would hope that the county processes work for the citizens. And with, you know, standards and procedures written out in black and white, then our county employees would be having, would have a, like a, a manual which they could follow. And that way, you know, we could have more accountability to how the processes work. And I'm gonna be specific on this one, and I am talking about the conditional use permit, um, mainly, because that's the one process that I've come up against that, you know. As you know, I've expressed, I don't, still has worked for the citizens at this point in the under canvas process. But, um, I would like to know how a citizen would address our county and say, hey, th- these are things that I believe could work better, that at the end of your process of the county, the citizens are the first and the most considered when developments are being processed through. I, I think that makes sense. I mean, I'm thinking, is it a petition? Is it simply a letter that goes to all three commissioners? Is there a meeting you have that we can throw it on the table? But somehow I'd like it to go through an official process, that it doesn't just get tabled again and again. And say, yeah, maybe we should look at this, and we don't, you know? And so that's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for an official process that it could be put into your consideration if it's an annual meeting, something. So, um, I know that we're not supposed to be asking questions at this time, but this is something that, um, I believe is, uh, near and dear to a lot of people in this county. And I think if a lot of people understood how the process of a conditional use permit could get developments pushed through in their backyard and not their best interest. I think a lot of citizens would be, you know, interested in nailing down the process. So, um, I don't know if you need to get back to me, but this is something that I, I would like to be involved with as a citizen and helping make sure that the processes really work for the citizens and not the corporate developments that want to come into our county. So I, I guess that's an open-ended question at this point, and maybe I'll follow up with an email. Um, but yeah, I'm looking to see how a citizen can really truly have a voice in the processes that this county works.
Hey, I'm, I'm gonna offer, um, if you would be amenable, if my seatmates are okay, for you and I, as, you know, acting as the chair, to have a conversation offline as far as so that I really understand what you're at. Because I think, you know, when you said specific to conditional use, uh, applications, that, yeah, like, I need to have a better understanding too as far as what is mandated through that process by state law. And so I, I, it would, I think it would be helpful for me to have a, uh, off-channel conversation with you directly so that I really understand what you're asking, if folks are.
Yeah, and you, and you know, Commissioner Satter, I'd be happy to even propose something to you that I feel would be just an easy, quick, different process. Um, as I've stated before, that I think it's, it's a costly one million dollar process, that it, during the application, uh, process in this conditional use permit, if it's asking for a conditional use permit, that it go out to public hearing, that the county hears from their citizens before they dive into doing CIPAs and all this other work that the citizens pay our county employees to do. So that is one suggestion I have, and I'd be happy to put that in writing. And I think that would be an easy process to fix within the county. And at the end of the day, the citizens could feel like their voice was being heard when a large development was being proposed in their area. But again, that's something that has to be, you know, written up, looked at, tossed around your, you know, your, the officials. And, but I'm, as a citizen, I'm hoping to, you know, make a difference down the road for all the citizens involved when large developments are asking for conditional use permits. So I'd love to have a conversation with you offline, and I'd be happy to submit some stuff in writing, too.
Okay. Do we have?
Thank you.
Do we have her contacted?
I just wrote down her phone number.
Okay, great, thank you. I'll, I'll.
And I.
Call later, this afternoon.
Commissioner Satter, I, I emailed you, um, this last week about that, uh, the Houston, the Northern Houston property, and you did get back to me. So I thank you very much, and thank you, Commissioner Christopher, for getting back to me as well. I appreciate the communication. So that's my email, and we'll be in touch.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are still in citizen comment. So this is the opportunity for folks to, uh, comment to the Board of Commissioners. This is your, this is your chance. Unmute yourself. Raise your hand.
Roger.
Roger Gadway.
Okay, Roger.
He's raising his hand.
Raising his hand. Can we figure out, try to speak, Mr. Gadway?
Cannot hear him, he's on the phone, too.
You're on the phone, we can't hear you for some reason.
We can't hear you, Mr., yeah. I looked him up, he looks like Bay throw a white salmon at that.
Yeah, it's not, he's not.
Yeah, we can't hear you audio at all.
I wonder why.
So there's something going on with your audio uplink, and I don't know.
Try calling in.
Yeah, well, he has a cell phone in his hand.
Yeah.
Have you pressed star six on your cell phone, sir?
Oh, that's a good sound.
Did that work?
Did that work?
Can we hear you now?
Can't hear him now.
Wow. No. Star six.
Star six one more time. Because I'm not seeing any callers, I'm muted. No, I do.
It says I'm unmuted.
There you go, yay! You're on. Mr. Gadway.
Okay, great. All right, well, I'm calling to talk about the Trout Lake rezone. And, uh.
That's your.
Oh, yeah, that is, you, I'm sorry, Mr. Gadway, after all that effort, that's on the agenda later. So citizen comment has to be for things that are not on the agenda later as far as.
Mr. Chairman.
Well, let me, let me phrase it, let me phrase it. Okay, let me phrase it a different way then, but I'm here to talk about SDS, the SDS sale.
Okay.
Okay. Well, and zoning in general.
In, yeah, in zoning in general. And I think the Trout Lake, okay, anyway, we all know that SDS is, is selling their timberland along with everything else. And of course, the concern, I'm the chair of the community council in Snowden, and we're unanimously in, in concerned about this in an agreement. But, uh, we're worried that the bidders, the high bidders will be people who see development as what they want to do here, converting the timberland to development. And, uh, the reason I talked about the Trout Lake rezone is I think that if the Board of Commissioners goes for that, then they'll be sending a message to bidders that this county's open to converting timberland to development. And I think they'll, they'll read that loud and clear, that all you have to do is ask, and you can do that. And so we can expect more financial groups, real estate trusts or whatever to be bidding on the land, not, not to keep it in timber, but to, to, uh, convert it to development. So that's a, that's a great concern. And I think, you know, these people do their research, and I think they will be looking at, at how you, you rule on that issue. So it really is about more than just that one rezone, irrespective of all of the reasons for and against that you're already considering. I think you need to look at the message you'll be sending to the, the bidders on the SDS property.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gadway, for your patience in being able to comment.
Okay, well, I, I felt it was important, so I persevered, so I hope you'll consider it seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are still in citizen comment. Okay, we are still in citizen comment. Oh, uh, Mr. Wagner, did you wish to make citizen comment?
Greg Wagner, 303 Fish Hatchery, Goldendale, Washington. A member of C, citizens educated about solar energy. On February 2nd. I asked five questions about Lund Hill Solar Farm, two of them were. How many permanent jobs would be created there and how much tax revenue would be generated? And since that time, Mrs. Snell got back to me and I had a few questions answered. She referred the jobs. To. Dave McClure, who I see there today, that was on March 23rd. He has yet to answer the question, how many jobs will be created at Lund Hill, he told me he had to ask Avengrid. I thought he might already know that, seeing how that was approved in August of 2019, the Lund Hill Solar Farm. And Krista Schroder, as far as tax revenue, said it's too new, they don't know how to tax it yet. Now, these are the two big selling points that. These solar companies use and the county falls for is, is jobs and taxes. Yet we have no data on that. Wouldn't that be something you'd want to know before you permitted this all to happen? Is that was really going to create jobs and it really will bring in large sums of tax revenue? If we have to have these ugly, dangerous, hazardous solar farms in our county. And those farms, especially Knight Road. Which. Has been in the works since uh, May of 18 when the DNR land was leased and they told the county about it. That the county officials should be concerned, we don't want that across the whole beautiful valley and have it destroy. The looks and our homes and our property values and our lives out here. It really needs to be taken into consideration. Where we place these solar farms and how big they are. So I would like to have answers from Mr. McClure about the jobs and Mrs. Schroder about how much tax revenue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Okay, we are still in citizen comment for a couple more minutes. So somebody can get in under the wire if they want to. Unmute yourself or raise your hand. Not seeing anybody.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I believe the HR manager has something to.
Oh, was hoping to add on, well, since we're not getting any more citizens, so. Go ahead, honor.
We are just thinking there is going to be a vacancy in the clerk process. We are seeking verbal approval to advertise for the legal admin one or two steps, one through three.
Okay. Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you.
I didn't even see her over there behind the.
By the post.
I thought I'd come over a little early as ever.
You say new building, you guys are gonna have to put a post in, so I can't see that.
It's the furthest seat away from the camera.
That will be, she's already reserved it. Okay. I'm not seeing anybody. So we got, we got one minute of citizen comment left, or less than a minute. I know what you're both here for. I guess, although it's citizen comment.
It's a beautiful day out.
It is a beautiful.
You know, that is a good citizen comment, right?
Yeah, no, it's warm and it's not too warm. That's funny.
I, I would like to say something real quick while we have one more minute.
Yes.
Um, I would like, just the, also like to um. I guess second what that caller said, and when you're making decisions about rezoning out in the west side of Pocatán County. That you take into consideration. That um, the comprehensive plans and the growth management and what decisions, like the gentleman said, could set a precedent for. People to come in and want to develop and it doesn't go with the comprehensive plans that are set forth in the. Community, so I just wanted to throw that out on the table. And thank you, have a great day, it is a beautiful day.
All right, thank you. It is now 1:30, so we are done with citizen comment, uh, 1:30 is the time we set aside for public hearings, public meetings and bid openings. Our first is a public meeting to consider approval of short plan SPL 2020 dash six. Uh, this is in the Appleton vicinity applicant Jason Thompson. And we have. Ms. Denise is here, then we'll provide a quick staff overview.
Okay, um. Short plan SPL 2021. Sorry. 2020 dash 16. Is a proposal to create two lots from parcel 03 dash 12 dash 0400 dash 0005 dash slash 00. The proposed short plan is located in the Appleton vicinity. The administrative review of the short plan has been completed, signatures have been obtained from the road health. Planning and Treasurer's Office, all conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the boards find that it's in the public's interest to approve the short plan, motion needs to be made granting final approval of SPL 2020 dash 16. Applicant Jason Thompson.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
No questions, no comments.
When I was looking at the short plan, is this parcel that we're splitting, were there two houses on the parcel already?
Yes. They're basically now they're compliant.
So how did they get to two, was that a pre 70 or?
Yeah, it had to have been grandfather Dan. Once the short planning ordinance came into effect, um, that wasn't allowed, so, but you know, we didn't make them.
Legal.
Yeah, it's grandpa, yeah, non-compromising, legal non-compromising.
Just not a non-compromising.
Yeah.
Okay.
So now they're legal.
I didn't know if we had permits for both houses or if this was one of those.
Um.
The way things happen in Quik, that kind of things, used to.
Long time ago.
Yeah, that's what I meant, yeah. I mean, granted, it doesn't really matter, because that's a different.
I was gonna say, they're cleaning up whatever the problem.
Yeah, no. I have my file with, with me, but um. I would assume these houses, you know, predate. Uh, 1969 plating ordinance.
Okay.
Seventy-nine zoning ordinance.
The permitting ordinance.
So, yeah, yeah, we didn't, you know, it's our. Um, building database um, only goes back to 1990, so I don't have access to the others.
No, you just don't see too many of them very.
No.
Many of them haven't been split off.
Haven't been, haven't been split off.
There's still, there's still a few out there, actually I saw one on. Zillow.
Oh.
You saw something for sale on Zillow?
There's like five houses in the county.
Yeah.
That was my only question. Okay, well, I would, I would, if there's no further ones, I would um, entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve short plan SPL 2020 dash 16 on parcel number 03 dash 12 dash 0400 dash 005. Or slash 00 located in the Appleton vicinity.
One second, motion.
Okay, I have a motion in a second on. SPL. 2020 dash. Uh, 16. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Sorry, I already scrolled to the next one. No, I know it's a 2020 government. Okay.
Phone number 3753, can you please press star or uh, star six? If you unmute your phone.
Right, that takes people too. Mine's just cracking. Okay. The answer is nice, nice dark line. Like mine, it's like there's no ink left in it. Easy board. Got it. Okay.
Asking for another pen?
Well, I don't, I, I guess whenever you get a chance, I don't, thank you. Uh, next is a public meeting to consider approval of short plan SPL 2021 dash 04. Uh, the applicant is Tina Do, this is in the Golddale vicinity. We will start with another staff report.
Okay, short plan SPL 2021 dash 04 is a proposal to create three lots from parcel 04. Dash 16 dash 1100 dash 0013 slash 00. Again, in the Golden Dale vicinity. Um. Sorry. The administrative review of the short plan has been completed, signatures have been obtained from the road health and planning departments. And the Treasurer's Office, all conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it's in the public's interest to approve the short plan, a motion needs to be made granting final approval of 2021 dash 04 applicant Tina Do.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I have no questions on this, no.
Pretty simple, okay. Entertain a motion.
Good, Jay, hold the next.
All right. Mister Chairman, I would uh, like to make a motion to approve short flat SPL. Uh, 2021 dash 04 on parcel number 04 dash 16 dash 1100 dash 0013. Or slash 00, which is located in the Golden Dale vicinity with the applicant of Tina Do.
Second motion.
You have a motion in a second to approve short flat SPL 2021 dash 04, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Recorder, I like a bottom like that.
We should. So if we get these, if we get more of these, I, I don't like the ultra fine point. I want super, like not, I want the opposite.
He's sensitive.
I like the fat ones, like you have basically a magic marker that's black. This is left from the Ray Thayer days. Years, really precise, yeah, not a precise scene guy.
See, mine says extra fine point, but it's actually pretty fat on there.
Yeah.
As you say, you got, did your little brush at the end, only got two horse hairs on it.
Yeah, that's true, maybe that's why it is, yeah. Thank you Denise. All right, Lori. A little ahead, but only a minute or so. Next is under unfinished business, uh. Was continued public meeting to consider the planning commissioner's recommendation. Of approval of rezon 2020 dash 01, a rezon of 80 acres. From Forest Resource to General Rural, in the Trout Lake vicinity, the applicant is Dean Enterprises LLC. So we will continue our conversation, what I did, I was curious, we had a couple of um. Homework assignments.
Yes, we did get you copies of the Dean Enterprise rezon 2017 01. And the decision on that, it was a rezon. From rural residential and forest resource to general rural. Then we also had rezon 2005 03 by Dean Enterprise. And that was a proposal to rezon 40 acres from Forest Resource to General Rural for the west 20 acres. And rural residential for the east 20 acres. And that was approved in 2006, and then you also requested um. Rezon 2017 04, which the applicant was Clayton Onomus. And that was in the BZ corner vicinity, and that was a proposal to rezon 22.6 acres from resource lands to rural residential two. And that was denied. Then we also provided a copy of the draft 2010 Trout Lake. What they had proposed for a conference of plan update, and after a little bit more research, it appears as though we were in the CIPA process and it got held up in CIPA. And never proceeded. And just a little more, we did, um, the Commissioner's office got three letters or comments today that I do have copies of it.
We, we got.
Okay. And then Scott Richmond with Dean Enterprise and Austin Bill with Bill Design, they are on the phone. Place they said they would be, and they are here, well, not here, but they are available to answer any questions if you do have any. So that concludes my homework.
Report on your homework.
Yes.
I appreciate your homework, but.
Oh, no problem.
Okay, so that takes us back to the discussion by the board, although I would be amenable if we had some technical questions of the applicant if we wanted to ask some questions. I have no questions, but I, I don't really, yeah, I didn't have anything.
So. I guess I was sitting here during the, when we did the, the BZ one. And having been able to read the, you, you said that they had not met. The standards in, in order to prove it, and that was that the, the needed, the, to prove it. And I never asked the question then and since, but. How do you prove that? And, and I don't know what that looks like, you know, in your mind, um, to show the necessary need. And I saw my own testimony back then too.
Should we made a motion before we had comment, I guess?
No, it doesn't, I mean, we can. We can.
You're always welcome to make it.
Yeah, you are. If you're, if you want to stand on. That, that is the strictest, uh, we don't necessarily do things.
Go ahead and make a motion.
Well, if you guys want to do some discussing, do some discussing, if you know.
Okay, I did go back because it was, again, thank you for providing the information, even though it was only in 2017, as far as the Onomus one, that obviously this stuff back further was. Most of that was before my time, as far as uh, the earlier rezones, as far as on the adjacent or near the subject. That we're discussing, but the Onomus one was because I. I was kind of curious, I did go back through and reread, reread the record, I think, and that's why it is important to make sure. You know, minutes are just that, they're minutes, they're not necessarily, but it wasn't really good to kind of trigger some of the memories. I do recall, uh, and I, I had written myself some notes as far as when I had reread it. You were correct in that the, the, one of the issues that I had raised was on the criteria, you know, meeting the criteria. Uh, and that was the issue over, how do you? How do you um? How do you justify? The, the, the need is there for additional, because I always think of. Rezones really should, you, you should not be doing rezones out of. You know, generally the time to, to. Make changes to plans is through the comprehensive plan update process, it's called the process. People set, as far as parcel sizes and what they want, you're planning for the community. Rezones are like a special circumstance, they're supposed to be, that's what they are, that's. They're outside that process, and so, you know, one of the criterias, you know, conditions have changed, there was a mistake made in the original, you know, this is to clean that up. And so you have to kind of go through the, through the checklist and the argument that was made then, which ultimately. Was um, was not successful was the. The need for, was the need for these two acre lots. And I think the board was uncomfortable, but there really was no data to support that, it was more anecdotal. Uh, but in. In my recollections, another one of the big issues in. Was that there was, Houston BZ. And you certainly know this, had been the subject of a lot of interest and a lot of litigation, there was active litigation with the. Third attempt at uh, comp plan update, sub area plan in Houston. Actually, there's still, we still have some outstanding litigation. Going on there, and that was part of, even if it wasn't really stated, that was part of the, the thinking is that you don't. It's, you don't change the rules when we don't even know what the rules are. And so we're probably better off to just leave things as they are. And there was significant uh, community concerns that were raised with that rezon, as far as the one in, in BZ. So it is. So it is, it's certainly relevant to the question that's in front of us, which is in Trout Lake. We have a similar, we have some similarity in that we don't have a comp plan that's been updated in the, you know, it's been decades that we're using old comp plans. We don't have any active litigation, so that's not the same, but we definitely have a lot of citizen or resident. There's been some issues raised with residents there as well, so that's that's similar to that twenty seventeen, and so I had written down kind of the policy question for me though, outside of the stuff, you know, kind of specific or, or across the whole county is we basically have our comp plans, our sub area plans, except for Dal's Port is probably the most recent one that's been updated that we've gotten through, I'm looking to Lori, we redid that one, I mean, and again, this wasn't last year. This was, that's probably the, from my memory is. I think Dalport was after something, because they were very active, because Dalport wanted to do it again, and we were like, you, you just did it. And, um, but basically our, our sub area plans are old, and they have not been updated. I would, in defense of the county, that has not been for lack of, from lack of trying. We have tried to update many sub area plans across the county over the last decade or more and have been unsuccessful in that we have updated them, but then they have faced legal challenges that ultimately they're either reversed, or we withdraw them and we agree to start over. And so we're going to have to make a decision about what I don't like all these reasons, I don't like reasons. Unless it, it, there is clear evidence, either conditions have changed, or a mistake was made, or there is some justification, because to me, it feels like you're changing the rules out, you know, mid game. But in defense, you also, we can't, we, it isn't that we aren't trying to update these things to what the community, you know, to reflect the community values that they want to have in the zoning, we have simply been unable to do that. And so we are routinely relying on twenty and thirty year old planning documents to guide us making decisions today. That seems like a really bad idea too, and so we have been forced into these kind of one offs where we're trying to force, uh, you know, what we believe to be the current view of planning in that community based on really almost anecdotal information. So I am, so I, I get that, but we, we have a huge problem that we're going to have to fix one way or another. And I've talked plenty now.
Well, is local planning dead? It's, it's, that's your line.
I know, but I have always been, I have always been a huge advocate for local planning, I believe in local planning, I don't want to Trout Lake, I don't want to plan for Trout Lake, I feel like we're being forced to do it because we can't ever we can't get through, and people say it's local planning, but it's like, and we, maybe some of you haven't experienced it, but I have experienced where we went through an extensive local process, you know, two, three years. Lots of input from folks, if folks don't get exactly what they want, they litigate it. And so it's not really, it's, it's my way or the highway where there's no and so we, we end up, there's a reason Houston BZ is on its third attempt. Because nobody could reach, I mean, not really. And I'm not completely convinced that, you know, because everybody always says, oh, let's start over. We'll get it right this time, and everybody is going to be on board, and if you just listen to us, if you, the county, do what we, we tell you to do, we'll be fine. The problem is that community doesn't know what it wants, not, not
They can't agree.
They can't agree on what they want, and we end up having to play referee. And we end up with whichever side, it ends up with the other side or the other, because it's not one side, it's like forty seven sides. And the other folks don't like it, and then nothing happens, and we're back here with, we have to decide on a case by case basis, does this proposal, which is a terrible way to do land use planning, I agree.
But it's what we're stuck with.
It's what we're stuck with.
The communities can't come together, get their acts together, they can't survive, you know. And, and I understand, because every time you make a decision, whether it's up zoning or down zoning, you're changing
Right.
multiple people's valuation.
Absolutely.
As well as their community value. And, yeah, getting to that point, um, that's, that's a tough one. And I agree that this is, this isn't, this is a, I mean, you can't say, and, and I've read everything, and I can't say that this is spot zoning, because it's attached to it, spot zoning is when you go out there in the middle and it's not attaching, and you're doing something for someone. In terms of community need, uh, last I checked, there is nothing for sale in the Trout Lake Valley, nothing. You cannot find it. With that being said, creating another lot is not going to create and alleviate any of the issues that were brought up. Affordable housing, housing for people to, that, that live in there can afford it. I just looked at Burkett Road and six out of the eight parcels aren't built on, and they're all owned by people from Portland. Uh, and that's, you know, the previous one. So we can't, and there's nothing we can do to, to make them sell, we don't have the ability, we can't decide what the value of those parcels are going to be, and here's the problem is, is I promise, even if you splatted the whole bloody Trout Lake Valley right now all at once and tried to create more supply than there is demand, they'd still all be sold by the weekend. So you're not going to fix any of the problems, or many of the problems that, that the people have brought up in their comments and their letters. Uh, this really comes down to, there will be growth, and growth is, is necessary and good in most instances. And it, and it's where do you want it the most? My big thing is, is I wanted to see what the Trout Lake Community Council had, uh, proposed back in two thousand and ten. Because I, back then, I was told that they were looking to expand to the west, because that was where the lower value forest ground is, and easier to build upon. And so, um, in the two thousand and ten, what the community did, and they came together and they spent years, and they brought in experts, and they did a really great job, and it didn't even make it through the process. Uh, it wasn't not through the process on appeal, it just can die, because there were other things in front of it, I guess, right?
Right, and then Mochi had mentioned that they were going through CIPA, and then I think it was withdrawn before it was appealed.
Did, didn't you, did it get through CIPA? Because I think the planning commission had one or two.
I think they had workshops.
Yeah, one or two workshops.
Not even hearing.
It wasn't even a hearing, yeah.
So.
But the community at the time came and said, like, this is the area where we are looking at this, which was kind of surprising to me that we had a comment saying that from the same people that were in the community council saying this isn't where we want.
Right.
Been likely for the same reasons, we don't like it, because it's not a comprehensive planning process, but until you get there. It's also not fair to our communities to say, we're not going to allow any changes when we're dealing with stuff from thirty years ago.
Right.
And, and so the, the, the test for me on, has there been changes? Well, of course, there's been changes, you should have went through three iterations of, of comprehensive plan updates at that, at that level, level in that time. Of course, there has to be updates, so that passes that test, um, for me. And, and I got the email today talking about wildfire, which is of course on everybody's mind. Um, I've always thought that, you know, you can, somebody needs to go into like Cheese Cave Road or something and build a fire break that would protect the entire community from the west. But, um, that's not part of this. And then the road issues, Jennings Road, um, it's a half, like, because it was fire access out of Jennings Road, right, and Jennings Road actually meets county spec standards for, for fire and everything. And you've got a half a mile on Jennings before Wood Road. You've got about a third of a mile before you can break out, what, if you had to, onto, is it Brian's Road? And get, still get through, you know, so that, you know, the ways out. I don't know, this is, this one's not easy for me based on the past, um, but when I look at the community of Trout Lake and how the you know, it's being divided. That is the next logical place.
Right, and for me, I will say that this, the proposal is mostly consistent with what the community had asked for in the draft back in twenty ten, which in some, granted, from a legal perspective, we can't rely on it, because it's not adopted, but it is it's guidance to me, because I, frankly, I do that sometimes as far as like, if I have a question about something, sometimes I will look back at the draft that the, the community provided before it got edited, just to kind of see what they were thinking. Because sometimes there's things where they, like, we can't do that, it, because of some, you know, there may be some legal requirements, there could be some stuff. But it's, it's helpful to have an understanding as far as what the community, that's the same thing as I look at this, the twenty ten was, this was kind of, it gave me some guidance as far as, and this it does, it's not perfect, but it, it gives me some sense of what that community was thinking, again, eleven years ago, but that's more up to date than twenty seven years ago, or thirty years ago, or, um, so I don't know, Commissioner, Commissioner Christopher, we have not heard from you.
No, you haven't.
No, so, we, we're all getting a turn, or a couple turns.
I'm going to be shirt and sweet. I think in some ways it could be considered a spot zone, just because it is not in their current comprehensive plan. I think in some ways you can say it's detrimental to the public health and safety and general welfare, because there is no fire exit. For those two reasons, I am opposed.
And the other one I start looking at is down Yellow Brick Road, and I don't know when those were break, broken off, but those are that's all in, um, Forest Resource, F R, should be twenty acre, you know. But all of Coyote Road, Lois Lane, um, you've got five acre zoning through that entire area. Well, not throughout the entire, but you've got at least four, eight, eight, nine, five acre lots down there. And I, I was just on Yellow Brick Road last week. When we were doing, I was out well monitoring with Whitney, and Yellow Brick Road, I'm sorry, doesn't seem to be twenty foot wide and and allow for fire access, especially going across that bridge.
And those lots are all were created prior to zoning.
Were they all created prior to zoning?
That's, and you know, they're zone forest resource, and they're kind of the
Yeah.
created priority zoning.
If you guys listened to my campaign at all, I have major concerns of fire safety. Especially as you start making development off into the trees. Uh, and I think it is going to be our responsibility to make sure we don't have our own little paradise California situation up here. If we allow people to develop without ways in and ways out, oh, we'll, we'll take care of it later, well, are you? We, we have no control over it later to make you do it the minute we sign off. So, uh, personally, I want to I guess I would say, I hope this, this vote and the way I'm planning in the vote will make anybody else planning on coming forward to make sure they understand I want, I want fire data, I want fire egress and, and ingress. As part of the start of the conversation, because I'm not going to have dead people on my, on my vote.
Scott Richmond of Dean Enterprise is on, on the phone, and you might ask him, because I know during the planning commission meeting, he did bring up some different options with access. And that, and that would be down the road if they were to short.
It's only a maybe. And I don't like maybes, so.
It's, I'm torn. Because that's, if we have a specific question to ask, I'm fine with it, if we're just basically taking testimony, then I'm, there's probably other folks that would like the opportunity to, to chime in. Um, although I, I do have, as far as I would be curious, because it was referenced in the materials we got from the planning, you know, through the planning commission, there was some discussion I saw as far as the, the potential for other, other access, and so I would, again, these are minutes, they're not, I'm, I'm fine if if he wanted to update us on that, at least basically give us what he told the planning commission firsthand, I would be okay with that. So Mister Richmond, Scott, if you are available and have been listening, which I'm sure you have, uh, if you want to update us as far as, because the, the issue of, of fire access into this potential project, I think is, we're really interested in that.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. Well, the fire, I'm glad the questions come up, it's a very important question to us. Uh, I know it's very important to the community. I, I can say, uh, at the beginning, we did do a shaded fire break on Cheese Cave Road ten or fifteen years ago, can't remember exactly when, and have talked to DNR about updating that, uh, in the near future again. We were told at the time, the planning commission hearings, that the issue of fire exit was really more of the short cloud issue rather than rezone issue, which is why we have not addressed it yet at this point. However, it's very much on our minds, and, uh, we, uh, sat down with the Trout Lake Fire Chief a week ago Friday, and discussed these issues, and I have discussed it with DNR, and we intend to pursue it further. Uh, in my mind, it would be very easy to extend Burkett Road as part of the development, and provide a link to Cheese Cave Road, which would give an extra, would give an exit out that direction. It may also be possible to find some way to get into the Dean Road area, so there'd be an exit out that direction. So that would, which would provide a fire exit for people in the Dean Road area uh, to the west, as well as people on Burkett Road or other roads uh, to get through, as, as it is, if we did nothing, there will be nothing. But yes, we intended to address that in great detail during the short clap process, but we were told we don't need to do it at this point, so that's, that's, uh, where we are on it.
Okay, thank you, Mister Richmond.
Listen, Commissioner Christopher, what I was reading in, in, uh, I guess your side statements is that you would consider the discussion of providing a key to the locked gate to the fire departments. Uh, which to me, it's more, I want the public to be able to get in and out of a locked gate uh, without having to have the fire department come open the lock to gate, so um, I guess I would say my concern is deeper than than that, but for the, and I don't, I, I won't go on record and say that I don't take going against the planning commission's recommendation like not at all. But for the two reasons I said earlier, I'm, I'm still going to have to, my vote will be to deny.
So was I, uh, Lori, maybe, because I didn't actually review last week's stuff for today, because we've been through it. But this is a rezone, because the, um, this Richmond is correct, generally, not generally, it is, the there are two different processes as far as the short cloud, that is when you address, and why it would be relevant, and if you know, you rezone things that are going to be subdivided, that you can't meet the criteria, it's going to be in the uh, requirements of the subdivision, uh, through the short plating process, then it doesn't really make any sense to rezone something that you can't actually develop. But was it, maybe was that just a draft proposal, what they were, you know, the three fives, and then the balance is a sixty five is a short plat, was that just included as a reference, or did I misunderstand that we were, it was almost like a joint process going on that we were?
What, when we did the CIPA review, and CIPA has to have the cumulative impact, so that's where
That's what I saw.
Down the road, if the Down the road, if the rezone was approved, they would be going in for a short plat. So with the CIPA, we included both the rezone and potential short plats, knowing they would only short plat if the rezone was approved. So for the CIPA checklist, we had to have a draft, very draft or preliminary layout of how the lots would would be if the rezone was approved and they go forward with the short plat.
Okay. So that's where I saw it.
Right, right. And I know Austin Bill, Bill Design had, had some drawings of the proposed potential lots as well as a conservation easement and other other things.
So if the rezone is approved and they submit for a short plat. Issues of fire access and all those other issues will be dealt with at that point, which will come back to the board of commissioners for approval. Approving a rezone does not in any way guarantee any potential short plat. You know, yes, if it meets the criteria, it could, if it could meet all the criteria, but it's not. By us, if we choose to approve the rezone today, we're not approving that draft short plat that was submitted.
Correct. You're not approving any division of land.
But the important thing is, is when you go through the short plat, it's an administrative process for the most part. And so we don't have the ability to give direction on that. We just signed two of them.
I don't believe you get public testimony for that either, do you?
You don't have to. It's not, it's not required because they are public, they are administrated. So we have public meetings, right? Not part of.
Right. But that's part of the concerns out there.
And I mean, if ever, if Dean's new and everybody knew that this was all going to get short platted later, which I am very much in favor of keeping the costs low so that they can short plat rather than long plat. Because when you long plat, you go in there and you put in 20 lots all at once. And you have to sell those lots in order to pay for the roads. And so you just burn through years and years worth of your development schedule, you know, or, or planned growth of, of an area and you do it all at once. And I was kind of surprised that, you know, Murdoch Way or coming off of Dean Road, coming into this. They didn't give themselves easements or whatever through there so that they could tie it back in because if Burkett came up and tied into Dean. You, you know, like if you were doing a long plat, you'd design all that in heaven. But when you just do short flat, short flat, short flat, rezone, short flat, short flat, rezone, you don't, you may not be planning for that. And I hope that they won't make that mistake again. But in that same instance, you know, that would, that would alleviate a lot of those fire concerns. My, my issue still with the fire concern is, is that short amount of Jennings Road. If you want two ways in and two ways out of every short plat, if that's the idea.
Yeah.
You, you've just shut down short plats all throughout the entire county because especially like this is flat ground for the most part. Imagine when the topography, you get into the areas where Snowden or something like that. Or creeks and everything else. You, it's going to be everywhere you build. Think of everywhere. I mean, you can't, there's no way that you could get away from that, you know, having full looped access. So I, while, while fire is key on my mind, it isn't something that I think would, would stop. Stop me from voting a yes on that one. Especially when you have so many substandard roads already built with yellow.
Okay. Other questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that the commissioners hold a public hearing on this rezone request. We have taken a great number of an amount of comment via emails and everything else. And that is in my mind, in essence, halfway to a public hearing and we have not got to hear from per, per se, the applicants even. And for me, I think to be fair, a public hearing would be the best way to do it.
I wouldn't be opposed to that, but I would also say that if we're going to do that, I would help the board considers doing that in their neighborhood, not over here.
I'm still looking for a second.
I will second. I will have that discussion.
Yeah, discussion.
I would, I would, I would be okay with that if it was over there and not telling all those people to drive over here on Tuesday at four o'clock.
And you, you do know that nobody shows up for public comment? Everybody shows up on there.
Not all people of all age classes are very familiar with that.
That is true.
I would say I'm, I, I'll support the motion as far as having our own public hearing. As far as the venue location, it's, it's certainly not unprecedented. We do. You know, have it in the West End. You know, when it's kind of a west end, although Trout Lake vicinity, you know, Trout Lake to White Salmon to the Pioneer Center is definitely better than Trout Lake to
Does Trout Lake have a community center, senior center, church, gymnasium?
Does the school?
Something that we could use to keep it in actual Trout Lake locale.
We could if they have, I've been assuming the school has, it certainly should have access to technology. Because as we have set the precedent now, everything is going to be, we have to be able to stream it and have it live. So the people that, you know, if somebody in Vickleton wants to comment on the, on this topic in Trout Lake, they have a right to do so. You know, we generally you know, we've either had the hearings here or at the other county facility, which is in White Salmon. That is the.
And then you would come back to the county seat and make.
To make the decision, right? Because we have to be in the county seat to make the decision. So.
I guess I would say I understand White Salmon's closer to Trout Lake than we are, but I still think it's limiting. I would, I would still prefer it to be in that community if possible, but. It's a three person board, so.
Now, I guess what we can say is that we don't necessarily have to set a location today. And we're, we're setting that, we're setting a, are we going to have a public hearing? Are we going to have our own public hearing? Because as the process is right now, we, unless we schedule another hearing, there is no other hearing. This is it. It's before us. So.
If you need more input, then I'm fine with another hearing.
We can, we can work out the, if the, the motion is successful, we can work out the details as to where we'll have to get public notice and all those sorts of things. So any more discussion on the motion, which is to schedule our own public hearing? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. We will schedule our own public hearing. We'll say the Houston B Z one, the Otomus one, we, we had, we had a public hearing down in the West End. Now we were at the Pioneer Center.
And then I think we'll have to look into the COVID restrictions to make sure you're socially distanced if people come in person. So.
I was thinking of a gymnasium or something with a bigger square footage.
Did you know? Most everybody has a phone though, and just because you can't do the, that part doesn't mean you can't do the phone.
Some have problems pushing door sticks.
Well, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Lori.
Yes. Have a good afternoon.
Yes. Okay. Well, we're running 15 minutes behind. I'm sorry. For our two o'clock, which is Julie Larson, the president of the Lyle Community Council, who is here to talk to us about the community council's proclamation, its support of developing safe access to the Clickitat Sandbar. And so I will give. There is Ms. Julie. I'm sure that was very, it was a riveting discussion for you.
I, I enjoyed it and learned a lot. So thank you.
Okay.
Am I on David? I can't.
Yes, yes, you are.
Okay. Thank you.
You could turn.
I'm maxed.
Your max up. Could you turn your volume up a little bit, Julie or?
Okay. How is that?
It's okay. That's fine. Good. Thank you. Go ahead.
So yeah, I'm Julie and I'm the current Chair of the Law Community Council. The council reorganized about three years ago and we meet regularly now on the second Tuesday of the month. We have a pretty good showing. Our functions as a council are to provide a forum for our citizens to voice concerns and opinions and to promote community involvement. We're also, the council also serves as a collective voice for the Lyle community. For 18 years, I've been a resident of Lyle and I've attended a number of meetings talking about the beautiful sandbar at the confluence of the Clickitat River. And the concern that there's no safe or legal access to it because of the railroad tracks. And because this issue kept coming up over and over at community council and other meetings, the law community council voted to appoint a small subcommittee to take a look at this and talk about it over several months with the community. And we developed a proclamation. We've decided as a community that we would really like to take this on as an issue. And we are asking for your support and help. I sent Lee a copy of our proclamation. Did you all receive that?
Yes, we did.
I'm going to just quickly go. While the small and unincorporated community situated near the sandbar that's created by the Clickitat Rivers merge with the mighty Columbia, we've got about 500 residents here. Whereas the Clickitat Sandbar is currently not legally accessible due to restrictions by Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad. And whereas the restrictions prohibit legal access to the sandbar. Multiple users do park haphazardly on both sides of state Route 14 and Canyon Road. They cross the railroad tracks illegally and this has presented lots and lots of safety issues. The sandbar is recognized as the kite, in the kiteboarding community as a location with world-class conditions. And safe and legal access to the Clickitat Sandbar would be a positive development for the vitality of the Lyle community. Whereas we've had years of investigations and meetings and discussions for the support of the safe and legal access to the sandbar. And many of those have involved our county commissioner, Dave Soder. Thank you, Dave. And there's multiple agencies that would be involved in this project. So the Lyle Community Council hereby proclaims on behalf of the Lyle community that there's significant interest, support and willingness to work with all the parties involved to see this project to fruition. And I just want to underscore that we have the support of longtime residents like Orin Johnson and Barb Sexton that remember family picnics and swimming parties on the sandbar. But we also have heard from, I think his name is Michael. It's a large. Let's see, Michael Stroud, the president of the Columbia Gorge Wind and Water Association. Which has hundreds of members have also expressed an interest in this. And then lots of just newcomers and I guess I still count myself after 18 years, still a newcomer to Lyle. But I do like to go down there and I'm not a kiteboarder, but it's just a beautiful area, beautiful place to recreate. So our subcommittee consists of two of our council members, Bill Wyler and Glenda Lovejoy and a community member Vern Harpall. And they've put considerable time into looking at this and talking to some of the stakeholders. So for now, I'm going to turn this over to Vern Harpall, who's explored a couple options that he'd like to present today.
Mr. Harpall, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Board of Commissioners. What we'd like to do more than just say we would like something is we're going to start putting together a, an actual plan of how we would proceed. Over the last two or three months with Commissioner Sodder's help and many other people. I've learned about the Washington Utilities and Trade Commission, how you get petitions to get crossings. How you deal with Burlington Northern. And, and, and all of, and then the Highway 14 congestion study. It's going to be a monumental task. But I was, what I wanted to just very briefly give you a heads up on what our thoughts on planning are. And we'll come back with a much more detailed presentation. But, but basically this comes a we, we, we've talked about having it as a two-phase project. The first phase would be to just get an emergency crossing that would regulate emergency access and, and just regulate the access in general. So that it's not chaos on, on the street. And there is great precedent to get an at-grade pedestrian crossing. And Issaquah, Washington has a pedestrian at-grade crossing going from a busy highway across the railroad tracks to a water feature. Identical. And it goes right across both Union Pacific and B N S F. And if Lee, could you let me share a screen for a second?
Sure. Hang on.
We're all getting so technologically advanced now.
I thought you'd be proud of me, David. Can you guys? Can you see my picture?
Not yet.
This is a look at this, this is, this is, there's no whistles. There's just a little serpentine. Cyclone fence. There are, this is a full speed track. Trains go by here at 60 miles an hour. Pedestrians beware. And so I just wanted to show that there's absolutely precedent. See, here's the corner and there's the
I'm not finding it.
Our, our crossing has great long stretches before you get even close to what. So anyway, we're going to use this as part of our petition.
You can share. Yeah. So share content, share your screen.
Now, can you see it?
Yeah.
Impressus, Vern.
I'm, I'm, I'm seeing it.
You got the click share screen, Vern.
Yeah, there should be a green button at the bottom of the page.
There we go. There we go. There. Sorry. Thank you.
Oh, there you go. Good job.
So.
I'm going to get this done. You figured it out.
There's the corner.
Did the railroad sign off on this little crosswalk?
Yes. Yeah. It's been there for 20 years plus and there is, there's no whistle and they're going full blast and you you know, pedestrians aren't really a threat to the train. The train's certainly a threat to the pedestrians. So I think that's why pedestrian crosswalk is. Anyway, we're going to explore that. So anyway, I'm, I'm done with that. And we're, and we don't want to do that. Now, how do I unshare it?
Click the little green button at the bottom.
There we go.
There you go. See, look at that. And now you need to make Lee the host again.
Yeah.
Okay. And then phase two would be so that would be phase one. We would try to do that over the next year or two with the help from the county commissioners, maybe get us a sponsor with the state legislature or something to go before the W T C and get an at-grade crossing right away. And then secondarily for, for the, for the permanent access, our plan would be to access the river. From the Lyle Point on the east side of the Clickitat River and put a pedestrian bridge over the Clickitat River from the parking lot by the boat ramp. And, and we think this is possible because there is a county road that literally goes right up to the railroad tracks. Where we could gain access. Where we could gain access to a pedestrian bridge. Well, there's a five-acre lot right next to the boat ramp that we could develop into a parking lot. It would take all the congestion off Highway fourteen. The parking lot would serve dual purpose of giving me a, finally a parking lot for the boat ramp, which it desperately needs. And then a park, and then parking for access to the sandbar. We envision this to be a, you know, cyclone fence-covered bridge that could be closed and access be denied when the fish are running. Anyway, we're, we're, there's lots and lots of ideas. We'll polish up this presentation and get it to you better, but those are our thoughts. I don't want to take up any more time. I'll give it back to Julie.
Vern, would you mind giving Lee back the host status? So click on Lee Snell. There should be three little buttons and then you need to click make host.
Top right-hand corner of Lee's.
Yep. I see Lee. Make Lee something. Make her the host. Okay, there you go, Lee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vern.
Now the host, good job, Vern.
Dave, how does the tribe feel about these?
Well, I don't, I would be I'd be here, I, I would be curious, you know, other people's perspective on that. Ms. Larson, what's your perspective on that?
Oh, well, I
Not to put you on the spot.
I certainly cannot or would not ever speak for the tribe. And I do see them as really important stakeholders in this. I've reached out very, very lightly and preliminary to a Cricfix staff member, just that this conversation has started. And one, and he's not necessarily in a decision-making role. But one of the things he felt he would really like would be a chance to talk to more recreational water users about the impact that their recreational their, their recreating on the water has with native fishing and nets and really kind of said, maybe we could turn this into an educational moment. So that's the, as far as we've gone and I really we really have a responsibility to work with the four tribes that fish the river to consider all this. That's my understanding of it, but we would certainly need county commissioner authority and title in order to really approach this in a nation-to-nation kind of way.
What, what do you need from us as far as what's the ask of the Board of Commissioners? Other than, you know, is it, is it just sanction? Is it support? What's the ask in this?
Well, that's a great segue because I have three bulleted things.
Perfect.
So I appreciate that. One is we do need endorsement that this is a project the county sees as value and that you know, we would, we would work and partner on this together. So we need your public endorsement. We also need help how to bring this to the attention of state representatives and senators. And also, as Vern mentioned, the Washington State Utility and Transportation Group. So we, we, as a small council, we need more more behind us. We also would really understand that there could be a lot of economic development opportunities in this. And we would like to talk with the Clickatatt Economic Development Board for an impact study. Because by everything we're hearing and looking at, this could bring a lot more people into Lisle and we'd like them to spend money and help out our community with the money. And then lastly, just some sort of ongoing means to partner and stay in touch. Some kind of communication, you know, we didn't know if that would be a regular place on the agenda every month or a subcommittee or an appointed liaison, but just some way that we stayed in touch as we worked together on that.
Those all seem really like very reasonable requests to make of the board. I'm going to open it up to my seatmates. I'm pretty familiar with the project and certainly the area and
A pretty good liaison.
Yeah.
And it's in your district.
And it's, yeah, and it's my, it is my own town.
To me, it's, you know, to get the railroad signed off, to get the Indians signed off, you got a tall mountain to climb. But I'll support your effort to climb it.
Yeah, I agree. I guess I'm the liaison then.
I nominate. You know the most about it. It's in your area.
Good luck.
Right. Go forth and do good work, sir.
Okay, so Julie, let me, let me follow up with you offline and we can kind of talk about next steps as far as you know, advocacy with legislators as far as our state legislature. And then also maybe let me have a visit with the, with Dave McClure, the Economic Development Director as to what, you know, because you, you talk about, you know, a study or getting some data as far as on the potential for economic development. Positive economic development impacts into the community of Lisle and the region. I think that would be really helpful to get some data on that, at least some, at least make some supposition as far as that.
Are you, are you recommending spending taxpayer dollars before we get tribes and railroads to?
I'm not suggesting, I'm suggesting tapping staff that we have to get. I'm not talking about doing it.
But not using the dollars that are there. Staff, yeah, staffers' dollars.
Right.
Got it. Okay, good with that.
No, I can't, like, we, none of us could spend any money without each other's approval.
I probably was trying to figure out which direction you were going with.
So, so let me follow up with you, Julie, then, in, kind of see what our next steps are, as I will as the liaison, the apparently duly authorized liaison, so.
All right. Well, thank you. And we will probably be making a public announcement that County Board of Commissioners has, is endorsing our proclamation. I just want to
Yes, is that, are my seatmates good with that? We're okay? Yes.
I would suggest that your staff could prepare a resolution in support of this. I'll prepare that for the, in two weeks on the consent.
On the consent. So you'll actually have a piece of paper from us, a, a resolution that, that formalizes it, but I, I think if you want to, if you want to talk about, but before that, you are free to do so.
Wonderful. Well, we thank you a lot, Vern. I don't know if you have anything to add?
Just that I love our county commissioner so much.
I love the fact that you've got the Zoom thing figured out as much as you do. That's pretty impressive, sir.
Yeah, all right, all right.
Next month, we're going to try to have a hybrid Zoom meeting with the community. Because as I heard you discussing earlier, we do have community members that have had trouble joining the Zooms. So we're trying to make sure they are included. But we need everybody there if they can come on Zoom. So wish us luck.
Speaking of that, could you send Lee your community meeting, Zoom meeting info? So if I wanted to tune in once in a while, I could tune in and it would be on my calendar?
Oh, be glad to send that. And you're always, all three of you are always invited. It's a public meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate this. We've talked about it a long time. And I think we're really got the energy and interest to really stay the course. I know it's a long-term project, so thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you, Vern. I'll be in touch. Okay, that brings us to our Veterans Advisory Board update. Welcome. It's, it's been, it's been a while. Good to see you, especially in the flesh.
Congratulations to the new board members. Congratulations, according to behalf of the board. We'll, we'll introduce those who are quick like. My name's Bill Caldwell. I own, there's five of us, the new, the new folks, and five of us. Three appointed by each commissioner. Then one each from the Goldendale American Leaking Post and my soul from the OX seven post eighty-seven. That's two's five. So we just had a lunch, we just had a meeting last week, elected new officers, Brian Dunning. Couldn't be here, he has a family emergency, so he's our new chairman. He's a past chairman, I'm making a short presentation. And our newest member, also elected vice chairman. Frank, Frank Huey, District Two, right, he's District Two, so we need him to be the mayor.
Yeah, got him on the vice chair right off the bat.
We're going to throw him in the lines then, get up and talk, but he's only been with us one meeting, so.
He's never talked before the board before, he'd be nervous.
Of course, Cynthia Pearlarm from She's a Heron Gold Hill District One. Been here way longer than me. And also longer than me, of course, Jerry Smith of District Three. All kinds of other county issues. Just very quickly, I'd give you a thumbnail sketch of what we've been up to, obviously this past year. We haven't been able to meet until this last week for the first time over here. But the previous year, we were fairly active as your advisors, remember, we're, you knew guys. We're advisors to you, the commissioners, and not all veterans affairs in the county, but indigent veterans. So the past year, the last calendar year, we spent considerable time, we met more than the one minimum requirement once here. We met at least five, I think, half a dozen times with various agencies, resource agencies around the county. To assess and compile what those resources are. And when somebody encountered an indigent vet, we would know we're a spirit. So that's what we've been doing to, to sort of get organized and, and help the indigents. The actual boots on the ground, so to speak, the actual contact with the indigent vets, we have each post has a veteran service officer. Here in Goldendale, White Salmon, those posts usually get the call for somebody from an indigent vet. Also the aux lodge in White Salmon because of the Alps, we also have a veteran service officer. So those are the folks who will actually, will reach out and get ahold of that vet once they're contacted. And see if they can meet the needs within the county guidelines, because we have a strict set of guidelines for assistance. Before we give them either, we never give them direct money, but we'll give them vouchers or gas cards or whatever. And then, of course, all that is strictly documented and sent to the county for financial adjudication. But they have to meet all the guidelines I'll go through with now, but as you can imagine, they have to be a vet first and then in dire need. So this past year, talking to Heather in the audit shop, I think we spent a total of thirty-five hundred, thirty-seven hundred dollars. I should say to taxpayers, I think it made that amount available to some indigent needs over this past year. That's the actual monetary. It varies year to year. In the western part of the county, we see maybe average six, maybe it doesn't have the most all year long. An indigent vet, usually transitory. I guess you have somewhere experienced on the east side. You can't have that number of people. So that's the numbers we sort of see. It's been sort of quiet this past year because of, I guess, everybody's been locked down, even those people who need. Resources. Resources that we rely on to support you, to give you, the commissioners, any advice on indigent vets. Those resources are very important to us and fortunately available in an autonomy fashion we need them. We have many community service advisors that I talked about, we talked to. You know, some of those folks are the sheriff's office, living at the records, give help in jails. Hospitals, outreach agencies like Debbie Gap, Blue Mountain Action, Coalition, our council, with those various and there's many more. They're the folks that we steer the indigent vets to for needs or coordinate with them to get, get them help. Other support we get, we get support from the county auditor's office. Because they take the bills and we send them and, and they pay them on those as well as additional support. We have, of course, have the veteran service officer, Bill Smith, who's out of that office and although his charter is wider than ours for veterans services. He does have, from time to time, some works with us on indigent, indigent needs, especially to get them veterans of various types benefits. Of course, one of our most important resources, she's worth her weight in diamonds and pearls, is right around the corner. We appreciate Lee giving us a hand because she really has got us well organized. She's well informed, she's always one step ahead of us in terms of where the liaison between you, the commissioners, and us. And we really appreciate her support. Finally, we appreciate the continued support of you, the commissioners. In the past, they've always been there when we need them for adjudication or assistance. Or an advice to us on which way you folks would like to go in terms of pointing us the right direction for assisting vets. And we're always looking forward to any thoughts you might have along that line. And of course, we know you're always going to be available. We have time to time scheduled, maybe perhaps a meeting like now to meet with you on any particular issue. So thank you for your continued support. With that, I'll open it up if any of the advisors or members would like to say so before we take questions from the commissioners.
Oh, I would just like to add a second concerning Lee's assistance to the board. She has really helped coordinate bringing in various service providers to educate us to what's available to the vets. And she's just been a wonderful asset.
I think they've all done a pretty darn good job, too.
Jerry?
I like to say that we have a pretty good board.
Just pretty good?
It wasn't, it wasn't qualifiers.
We got, we got two new ones on there. I know who you are, but the one in the middle there, I don't know if I could include him in that. No, I have not heard anything bad. And normally if there was a midget of anything, I would have heard it. But I know you're, you're doing a good job. And I like the direction you're taking things. Thank you for it.
Thanks, Jerry. And here I thought he was talking about his board.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say thank you for putting the call up there to ask for some help so I can get involved. Otherwise, I wouldn't have known. I mean, I know it's out there, but I wouldn't know where to go to help out. I do appreciate putting that call out there like that. Give me the opportunity to put my name in the hat and select you evidently enough. So this is really short because you picked me, but that's okay.
It's hard to find good volunteers, but when you find them, maybe five times instead of one.
Again, I do appreciate the opportunity, though, having the word out there so that I could get the ball. So, thank you.
Of our indigent vets, you know, you might work with six a year. How, how many of them are frequent flyers that you work with year after year versus?
That's a good question. And there are the onesies and twizies. I think you probably got some of this under the guide. We'll hear from them almost routinely about a certain time of the year, but somebody hadn't paid their electric bill for three months. And we've learned to pretty much contain those folks because they'll always come back. And they, they need bigger help than just, you know, that kind of help. So we try to stir them once again, the one of these other county folks with help. So maybe like one or two, are you there?
I've really only seen one on the Spider County. And I try to let people know, you know, this isn't a frequent flyer program. You know, in as nice a way as possible. They need to get their ducks in a row. Yes, we're here to assist, but they need to get their finances in order to. And so, yeah, I've had one, but that vet had taken a few years off at least before she called out this year.
Well, I can say for me, Frank, welcome, welcome aboard from, from, is the appointee out of District Two. You're replacing, you know, Keith Johnson was on there from the foundation and in some ways, I credit him. Uh, you're replacing, uh, you know, Keith Johnson was on there from the foundation, and in some ways, I credit him. Cause Keith could be um, tenacious, I guess is how I'll say, as far as um, you know, the formation of the advisory board, the, ultimately, the um, you know, getting a, a veteran service officer, all that, kind of, a lot of that grew out of a conversation, I'll call it a conversation. A um, with, that Keith had with myself at a candidates night, couple, three elections ago for myself, about the real need and, you know, he, we did sponsor, um, and I know Jerry was there. Uh, kind of a community meeting across the whole county to get veterans together, just to kind of understand what the need was that was out there. And the, and the board saw, you know, an incredible need for both the advisory board and um, other services for veterans in Click Attack County, and that's really, I think we should all be really proud of what we've sort of built in Click Attack County, it really is, it's kind of a model for other counties, we, we, we are stars, we really are, when I talk to, you know, our counterparts across the, across the state. You know, this is fairly, you, the relationship, I would say, between the Board of Commissioners, its advisory board, and the veterans is, it's not that it's not, it's, it's good in other places, but we have a, we are pretty special here. Where, uh, and I think that, you know, that comes from a really supportive board, but more importantly, it comes from really active, engaged advisory board members that give us good advice so that we can make good decisions, so you are, you are joining a very elite. Uh, I like to think of a club and you, you're, you're going to be a good fit there, I think. Any questions?
I don't have much to say other than, uh, you know.
Really? You? That's shocking, isn't it?
I'm the one that sits over here and lets you guys talk for forty minutes.
We're still flirting each other.
Want to hold hands while we talk?
Yeah, 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 please. I'm getting a gavel.
Anyway, just know that, that you have my full support, if you ever need anything from me, I'm a phone call away or email away, and I'll be there in five minutes kind of thing, so. Uh, one hundred percent support from me.
Yeah, that'd be a good, a good follow-up, but what do you, do you need anything from us that we're not doing now, or more support, or more? You know, notwithstanding the last year, which is kind of an anomaly as far as um, you know, as things, you know, free up and we're getting back to more of a normal thing. I mean, do you see things that you need from us as far as, or, you know, advice from you as far as for on indigents, as far as things that we could do if we're missing, if we're missing something?
If you can't think of it now and you think of it later, that's where the email and the phone call comes in.
This is the first time we've met in years, and we're also getting sort of reestablished, but we're stepping off, I think, uh, on a more solid foundation of the work we've done a year before to gather all the resources, but it's good to know that uh, we, you're going to support you, you guys are there.
Yeah.
I guess we would in turn ask you if you have any special interest items too regarding indigent vets that might show up, just to let us know.
Do you, um, you know, I think, and, and it's, I don't know that it's anecdotal, I think we've probably all seen it. Just the rise of homelessness, actual folks in the county, which, you know, we just did not have before. You know, having spent my whole life here, I'm sure Mr. Smith can attest to the, you know, we just did not have that. You know, and I know we've, and I, we've asked before about, you know, are some of those veterans that we're seeing in the county, the homeless folks that we're having, you know, and how are we getting some outreach out to them, um, folks?
There are some that, I guess, I don't know if I want to say homeless, in the traditional sense of the word.
Right, yeah, that's something I'm learning, or, you know, we always think of, you know, it was, you're either this or this, and that's, it's a, right, it's a spectrum.
Some people that's living on somebody's couch.
Yeah, I see a lot of that, they're, they're living with somebody, they don't have their own place. Uh, they can't afford their own place, they're sleep, yeah, they're couch surfing. Um, I've been in touch with a vet that was living in his travel trailer.
Right.
A couple of those, you know, off the grid. But yeah, there is kind of a homeless issue, I guess. But they're, they're finding places, I guess. They're not in cardboard boxes that I'm aware of, at least that I'm aware of.
Right.
So I think that's what a lot of us think of as homelessness, and there, now there's this new definition of homelessness that we're trying to wrap our heads around, but.
Well, I think indigent is probably the, probably the right word, and that I, following up, what Cindy said, I, I have a, what I call an indigent vet living on my property out of his camper trailer, has been there for several years now, and his, you know, he gets a little veterans thing, and that's about it, but we've stirred him like we do all indigent vets. We stir him, so he just, you know, cleaners once a week, food there, uh, that kind of stuff.
Right.
He would, uh, without me, give him a water hose and a, and an extension cord, he would, he'd deliver it off the grid too. So there are a lot of folks out there like that, and from time to time, folks like him do need something else. We hope to hook him up with the VA now, so as well, the VA clinic in the Dallas, to the stuff that, you just have to be there on the ground to talk to them, and.
Cause they don't know a lot of those programs exist, so in fact, if you have the, the resource list, that's, I like that.
So the thing is, yeah, we can get them the resources in front of them.
I just gotta get him a trailer permit, I do.
Yeah, well.
You're not that guy anymore, you're the vet guy now. Yeah, yeah.
Um, but anyway, if he wasn't living on my property or somebody else's, he would truly be homeless. So we do as citizens, we all do the best we can, you know, to help these folks along, cause a lot of them are in a situation like this individual I'm talking about, who will never be out of the situation, it's been that situation for years and reasons beyond anything we're in control, it's always going to be that.
Well, that brings up another question I have, is, is the mental health side of veteran services, are you getting enough support on that side of this equation?
Well, some of the folks have come to make presentations for us here, we're from the mental health community, and they, they clear that they're often available. Uh, that people actually want to go see them.
They, they have to want us to help.
And we, we let that in front of the federal attorney, and then after that.
As long as you have the resource, then you can say, hey, you should call so and so, that's.
We have that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's always, that's a delicate conversation.
Right.
I have a couple of folks I had worked with as constituents that know that I have suggested, because generally, like someone that I may be working with, it's because they have a civil land use issue, or they have some, you know, they have some issue that kind of falls in our um, you know, area of authority, or something that we have some control over. But, you know, a couple of times, you know, I've had a couple that, you know, in getting to know them, they have broader issues. There's, it's not this one little thing that I'm working on, you know, you're having a dispute about your, your road easement with your neighbor. That's not really the foundation of the problem, it's all this other stuff. You know, and a couple of those have been, although in this case, it's not, they weren't indigent. And so it wouldn't have been, but I have tried to kind of hand them off to different people, that some of it, you know, is, I, I've had a, you know, folks where I, I've acquired with mental health services because they, they need some help. And I think it goes back to you folks, you know, you're working with the indigents, but it really isn't in a, that's one benefit we have in a small community is that those relationships, that's what those are, and the only way you're going to do it is person by person. Where you actually know or are able to interact one-on-one with somebody and kind of get them to the help, try to get them to the help that they need, ultimately, it's, it's their choice if they're not. If you're, you know, a big, you know, big city thing, or something where it's, you know, they're, they're not going to a website, they're not going, you know, they're not getting information off a billboard, and they're, they're doing it because they had a conversation with somebody that they perceive cares about um, their wellbeing, and that, you know, and, and that's why we need folks like you. So thank you. So thank you, that was my hundred and forty word thank you, Jake is much more spirited.
You don't let anybody else get a word in edgewise.
Oh.
Sorry, guys.
No, and thank you for me too.
He's gonna go, he's just gonna hit me with it.
All right, anything else for these fine folks before we let them get back to their day?
You two would never survive on Twitter?
Yeah. I'm not too worried about it.
Not on Twitter?
Yeah.
Few characters.
As few characters as possible, yes.
That's right.
All right, well, thank you for coming in, we look forward to, to seeing you in person on a regular basis. Without these, and we'll um.
Please announce a mass burning party soon.
Yes. Soon, really soon. All right, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Bye now.
All right, ladies, enjoy the presentation.
Yes. For us, well, we don't have too much left. Uh, so we got the add-on, which is the new business landowner acknowledgement form.
Did he send that over?
The new amended one.
He did, oh, okay.
Oh, look. Brilliant.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I would uh, make the motion uh, to sign the landowner acknowledgement form uh, uh, with regards to parcel zero four one three two three zero zero dash zero 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 eight forward slash zero zero. Uh, this is for the Mid Columbia Regional Fisheries Enhancement Group, uh, but similar kind of very funding board grant.
Second motion?
Okay, I have a motion in a second on the landowner acknowledgement form, any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed, I hopped right over consent, sorry.
Chairman, make a motion to accept the consent agenda with all fifteen items?
I will second the motion.
Okay, got a motion in a second on consent, any discussion on any of those?
Yeah, I thought, um, I was looking through the names and the applications for the um, disability advisory group.
Oh.
And I was really impressed with the, the people who had applied in both Skamania County, and I was really happy to see that there was an individual who will be serving on the board from first-person perspective, as being someone from that.
The daughter of one of the other.
Yes, and I think that would, that'll be really good to give a, a, that viewpoint during those meetings, so. I, and I was, I was astounded, there were other people who, who had applied, who didn't even make it on the board, who would have been great to serve on it as well, so. Um, I just wanted to say of the consent, that, that was really great to see that, you know, I think that that board will be up to a good start.
Yeah, and I, the amount of people that got interested in that board, I guess I'd say it surprised me to some degree.
I was surprised.
But the people that are in that, the people that are close to um, or have family um, that are touched by that, you know, they, they stepped up, and I want to thank them for that.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, any other comments on consent agenda items? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Payments and approvals.
I guess I'll do it, Mr. Chairman, uh, make a motion to approve pay estimate number twelve to Kirby Nagelhaus Construction Company in the amount of uh, one million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and nine cents, excluding retainings, in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and forty-six cents, and including seven and a half percent sales tax in the amount of ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and six cents, for a payment amount of one million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eleven dollars and seventy-two cents for the county services bill and contract number C zero three one two zero.
And I will second the motion with a little bit of pucker.
Okay, yeah.
Pucker huddle.
Oh, pack a little pucker huddle.
Hello, pucker huddle.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to approve, passed at number twelve, to Kirby Nagelhaus Construction, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passed.
Yeah, my brother C D's one.
I thought about it as soon as Jerry walked out, because Jerry would remember why it was called pucker huddle.
Oh, he would, Jerry totally would have.
Yeah. Right after he walked out.
Yeah, ask him, cause if he doesn't, he'll make it up. It'll be really, which will be the reason.
Which is most of what we have.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of one million, four hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-two cents for date ending April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Uh, the second motion?
Yeah, a motion in a second on the bills, any discussion on those? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. The bills, that brings us to elected officials report, prosecuting attorney David Cannell. I see you are, you were, there you are.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Cannell.
I, I don't have anything to report right now, it does look like um, the trials are full speed ahead for May nineteenth. And then, we also did receive word about half an hour ago, President Supreme Court denied a motion to reconsider the Blake decision, so that is the final law regarding um, the unconstitutionality of the um, controlled substance statutes. And we're just uh, waiting to see what the legislature does, there's um, it, I, I imagine people get paid quite well to try to figure out what's going on over there, but we'll find out all, uh, here soon enough, but uh, but it wouldn't be me. And then, um, just on a, on a, on another note, um, the Chauvin trial came back with a verdict about twenty minutes ago, they found the officer guilty, so hopefully there won't be, um, you know, massive riots all over the country tonight, so that'll be good, uh. And um, that's what I know right now, any questions, I'd be happy to um, try to answer.
Right, this is Commissioner Christopher, I have a question about what your opinion is of are, when this COVID thing starts winding down, are the courts going to start being super busy, are you going to start being? I mean, are we going to start hearing requests for more staff or, or not? I guess I'd say, I'm trying to get a budget idea in my head before we get too far into it.
I don't think so, I mean, there's, there's no way of, um, you know, the, the, I mean, we have one courtroom, one judge, we share with Skamania County, so that's not going to change anytime soon. Um, and I know East District is making plans to utilize the spirit court when they're not in session on the alternative weeks to allow for some more social distancing for their trials, they're set to proceed, they're hoping on uh, May uh, twenty-sixth, if I remember correctly. West District, um, you know, has the newer facility down there in the Pioneer Building that is a little more generous with the spacing, so they're, I think they're hoping to proceed on uh, May eighteenth um, with uh, some misdemeanor trials. You know, the, we've all been busy, I mean, there's, is, there's not a lack of work, but uh, I, 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 I don't see any um, reasonable basis at this point from, you know, certainly, I can only speak to my department, I, I, I don't, I don't say that.
I was just thinking with, with all these cases that are going to start getting prosecuted, and Blake cases that are going to start happen to go backwards through the system, uh, but you're right, the system can only accomplish so much, so it just takes longer, and thank you.
Well, it's going to take longer and some things just, uh, you know, are, are not going to be the same as they would have been two years ago, or hopefully two years from now, I mean, that's just a, a fact of life.
Okay. All right, I, I don't have anything else at this, at this point.
No news is good news.
Yeah, no news is good news, so, okay.
All right, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, sir.
I guess my worry is I uh, I hope that the Supreme Court and our legislature figure something out with the Blake decision to make us not on the hook.
Yeah.
For illegal incarcerations and restitutions going back twenty-seven years. Um, that could just be such a massive bankrupt small counties, but would spread it to do.
Okay, don't disagree with you, but I'm going to move this towards um, board pending, uh, any, anything that anybody wants to bring up? Or, yes, Madam Clark?
This may help Commissioner Christopher as far as budget issues. If the West District Courts really ramp up and, you know, try to hold their trials, their budget may be affected, and we monitor that fund here. And so I always try to guest make and do averages and kind of project out, and I also talk and work with their administrators. and do averages and kind of project out. And I also talk and work with their administrators. And so that will be one area and I'll try to keep you advised. I do.
Small numbers, I can see it. If it's, if it's big numbers, we're going to have to get ahead of it.
We've had a couple of years where we had to ask for supplementals.
Yeah. Yeah, the court is going to have to play it by ear and see what happens. I think there will be impacts we haven't really thought about, unintended consequences of things. Notwithstanding Blake, because that could really be.
That could really, really bad.
King County pays the first little bit. They'll change.
They'll change the rules. Yeah, they'll, they'll fix it. I would just update. Legislative Steering Committee met on Friday. I was on the legal committee and I think I had, I had updated us last week that we were going to be presenting to lead steering on the proposal, our recommendation to pursue litigation, or at least potential litigation against the state over indigent defense under both unfunded mandate and some constitutional claims that that is a state responsibility that they are inadequately funding. The county, local counties pay about 95% of the cost of that. The state provides about 5% of the cost. The Legislative Steering Committee had a healthy discussion about the pros and cons of it. It did vote unanimously to support recommending, because they're not the actual, the Board of Directors is the only one that can authorize litigation. So that will be before the board, the Board of Directors on May 6th, I think, or May 5th, because that's our business meeting is on May 5th and I'll.
And have any of the legislature gotten wind of that?
They have. It was kind of an interesting discussion because the, I don't know, Hans, he's a, he's a Snohomish County Councilman now, but he was a 10-year legislator. And so he was one of the, and he, we were like, well, we want to hear. He was, he was, you know, part of the discussion about being cautious about, you know, damaging the relationship with legislature. Ultimately, he voted in favor to do it too, because the, you know, the bulk of the testimony from folks or comments from folks were that, you know, we had tried for 10 years to work with the legislature. Yeah, that's what's people are like, what relationship that's not.
We're ignored.
And we had several, I didn't, because I actually have not, and I would be curious if either of you two have had a, I mean, have you had interactions with our legislators on this issue specifically? It's like I, I have not, as far as advising them as far, I have on the, you guys need to pay your share, but not that if you don't, we're going to sue you. Cause the, because several of the commissioners across the state had and had been told by their legislators that, you know, we don't like it, but that's really the only way you're going to get our attention. So, because we did kind of use the example of McCleary, but you know, I had argued that McCleary, again, you have unintended consequences that, you know, we could, and that is one of the downsides. And I think the Board of Directors will really make sure that we're comfortable before we vote on that is because the state, like they did with McCleary, if the, your the, the state say the courts find in favor of the counties, that you're not, you're not giving enough towards indigent defense. We get all kinds of other resources from the state and the state could just say, oh, okay, this is all now indigent defense here's, and we could actually end up with no more, maybe even less resources than we had before. And so that is, you know, that's, that's a risk that the, that we're going to have to weigh.
I'm kind of okay with that, because if they want to cut a different program, then they can explain why they cut the other program.
And that was, you know, the, the, some of the folks, that was their exact argument was like, well, then they're the one, if you're going to take money from public health and say, oh, that's now indigent defense.
If I've got to suck money from public health to pay our share of indigent defense, I'm on the hook. So if they're going to do it, we can be on.
Right. That was, that was the argument. So we'll see. I'll keep you in the loop as far as with the Board of Directors, because ultimately they'll be the ones that decide whether we do it. It's within the existing budget of the, because we pay an assessment towards legal defense at WASAC. And so we're not looking at any increase. It's just, it's we're, we have two cases pending that, or I think we have the ballot drop box is being handled through that program. Which I think we actually will get some, that's, they're being sued under unfunded, the unfunded mandate statute that the state has. I'm trying to think of the, the other one we lost. That was the Spokane County. Were they legislature, you know, they had the folks that wanted to re, they wanted to change Spokane County to a charter county. Went to the voters, the voter said, no, they wanted to stay. I think it actually went twice and it said, no. And so the legislature just redrafted things in, it ended up where you had to go to a five-member district only elections in counties between this size and this size of which there was one, which was Spokane County. And so the association sued saying it was not a uniform election system and the state Supreme Court sided with the legislature. So, so we lost that one. So, so there you go. So I think that's the only update I have. That was on Friday and the load administration board met for the, I think, second time this week from the kit. So. There's a lot of stuff going on, I guess. I don't know. Well, no, it really, and I'm being facetious. Actually, I think it's every other week.
Well, that's what I thought it was. Every other week. You talk like it's twice or three.
Well, but there's, that's every other week. And then there's another part of it that's every other week and another part of it that's every other week. And so when you stack those on, it's routine that I have two a week of that, of that committee. So.
Couldn't happen to the nicer guy.
But it's all Zoom, so it's, it's not bad.
Maybe we can change that. I think in economic development, District Three, and then I'd get involved.
You, it's countywide. Anything else anybody wants to share or?
Continue or I'm going to motion.
Can I make the motion to adjourn? Cause you always get to do it. I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
I don't even get to finish talking normally when you make it.
Okay, we have.
That's usually the point, trying to save you.
I have a motion in a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. We are adjourned.
Thank you, who watches.
Yeah, who watches.